Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 20, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable charter and the Spectrum Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brodmann?
Councilmember Brodmann?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Ajamiyan. What's next, please?
Mayor, your flag salute.
So please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to your republic, and to God, our nation. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 20, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable charter and the Spectrum Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brodmann? Councilmember Brodmann?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Ajamiyan. What's next, please?
Mayor, your flag salute.
So please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to your republic, and to God, our nation. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the republic of the United States of America. Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Tonight, we give thanks for the freedoms we enjoy in this great country and pray for peace and prosperity in our city and throughout the world. Grant our council the wisdom to arrive at solutions which will benefit the Glendale community. Finally, we pray for the grace to act according to your will. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Ajamiyan. So what's next, please?
Next is the Agenda for the October 20, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Tuesday, October 13, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next would be presentation appointments, 3A Agenda Preview for the meetings for the meetings of Tuesday, October 27, 2020, and that will be done by John Taktalian.
Thank you, Mr. Taktalian.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council. Next week, we will begin with our Housing Authority meeting in the afternoon. We'll have one item. It'll be a report from Community Development regarding selection of an affordable housing developer to develop an affordable project for families on Housing Authority-owned property that's located at 900 East Broadway. We'll also have a special meeting of the City Council in the afternoon. There will be a report from Community Development regarding the introduction of amendments to Title 30 of the Municipal Code regarding designer view for projects in the downtown specific plan, murals, rebuilds following natural disasters, and related updates. And in the evening for the City Council meeting, we have a number of consent items. At 8A will be a report from the Police Department regarding the city's response to the 1920 report of the Civil Grand Jury here in Los Angeles County. 4B is a report by the city attorney regarding the city's response to the 1920 report of the Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury regarding cutting down on food waste. At 4C is a report from Water and Power regarding the award of a design-build contract for pipeline management program in fiscal year 2021. And finally, at 4D is a report from our Information Services Department related to amendments to our lease agreement with Crown Council International. Under action items, we have three items. At 8A will be a report from Management Services regarding the potential implementation of a sustainability commission. 8C is a report from Public Works regarding standards for landscaping and parkways. And finally, at 8C will be a report from Community Development regarding consultant recommendations and funding allocation related to the Vertigo Wash Visioning Project. That concludes the report for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Taktalian. What's next, please?
Next would be 3B Presentation, League of California Cities 2020. Helen Putnam Award for Excellence in Community Service and Economic Development, Glendale Ecosystem for Tech Startups.
Thank you, Mr. Bolanian.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. It's a very exciting evening for us. We have our economic development team has received the prestigious Helen Putnam Award for Excellence in Community Service and Economic Development. I'm going to turn it over to Phil Lamzofame, Community Development Director.
Mr. Lamzofame.
And that is...
This is not the first time that you are getting such...
No, no, sir, it is not. But I am going to take the microphone just to introduce Jennifer Kwan, who is a local representative for the California League of California Cities representing, that represents Glendale. Jennifer is here, and I will turn it to you, Jennifer.
Thanks, Phil. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here to honor the city of Glendale. Each year, the League honors cities throughout the state for outstanding and innovative efforts to better serve and respond to the needs in their communities with awards that we call the Helen Putnam Awards. Helen Putnam was the first female president of the League of California Cities in the mid-1970s, and like many councilmembers, she was a tremendous civic advocate. She was a mayor in Petaluma, a supervisor in Sonoma County, a schoolteacher, and a principal. She had a reputation for giving her all to each of her endeavors, and likewise, she had a tremendous amount of respect for other city officials like yourselves, who also gave 100%. In her honor and her memory, the League established the Helen Putnam Awards in 1982 to recognize the outstanding achievements by California cities. The award recognizes innovative and excellent city programs that make communities better places to live and work. Honoraries have all made unique contributions to their community with innovative solutions that either improve the quality of life, more efficiently deliver services and programs, or provide a new service that responds to a community need. Awards are given in 12 different categories, and they were awarded a couple weeks ago at our first-ever virtual annual conference. And happy to share that the city of Glendale received an award in the Community Services and Economic Development category for the GETS project, Glendale Ecosystem for Tech Startups. The project has been cultivating an ecosystem of innovation for the local startup community while promoting the city as a tech regional hub. The project demonstrates the council's commitment to supporting and growing business enterprises that improve the local community economy. And this is, as all of you know, more important than ever, especially as cities across the region deal with the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. So congratulations to the mayor and the City Council for this commitment. You've all recognized a need in your community and worked with all stakeholders on a very innovative solution. So recognition is very much deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Mayor, it is my privilege to present to you a plaque. But just before I do, I would like to acknowledge the team that really has been working on this for several years, led by Jennifer Hiromoto. With us tonight is, raise your hand, John.
But we have to show them...
Bandic. I'm sorry?
We have to show whom we are talking about on TV?
Yeah, they're gonna come up and take a picture with you in a minute.
Oh, okay.
Jennifer Hiromoto, John Bandic, Juan Gonzalez, Sandra Rodriguez, Sebok Deshoyan, Garn Kokorian, Kokoyan, not with us, Tom Arsad. They're not, they're not here tonight. They're still with us. Tom Arsad and Ani Pagosian. That's really the core team that has implemented this. And so, Mr. Mayor, if I could invite them up for a picture with you, and I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the League and Jennifer Kwan.
All right. Let's do it.
It's prestigious.
Thank you for a good job. I appreciate your hard work. Okay, next item, please.
Next would be 3C Appointment of boards and commission members. One would be Edith M. Fuentes Planning Commission.
Okay. So are we voting on that?
Thank you.
We go to...
Mr. Mayor?
Arlie Soffe.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank and congratulate staff on the Helen Putnam Award. I know it's a tremendous honor in the League of California Cities and for all municipalities to have one of these. And, you know, I know that former councilmember Zari Sinayan is sharing in this moment with you. I know that he was tremendously passionate about helping grow the tech sector here in Glendale. So congratulations to you. And although our friend, former councilmember Sinayan, is thousands of miles away, preoccupied with more urgent matters and more serious matters, I know that part of him celebrates with you. I bring forth today for my colleagues the nomination of Ms. Edith Fuentes to our planning commission. Some of you know that Steven Matier, my previous appointee, had to step down from his position because of family considerations. He had to move closer to his wife's place of employment. So he was no longer a Glendale resident. And in looking at potential candidates, I cannot think of anyone who's technically more qualified, more knowledgeable about our zoning code than Edith Fuentes. Many of you know her for many years as Glendale zoning administrator. She has two master's degrees, one from USC in Masters of Planning and Development Studies, as well as one from Florida International University in Public Administration. She studied architecture and construction standards and planning at the University of Santo Tomas in the Manila Philippines. She's a licensed general building contractor, registered licensed architect in the Philippines, and has completed a number of coursework as well as a certificate program for the Harvard Cambridge Graduate School of Design and has been very involved in the community and a number of philanthropic organizations, including the Filipino-American Business Association as well as the Seropanis International. And with that, I'd like to put forth the name of Ms. Fuentes for your approval.
Do I have a second? I guess, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Doesn't require it.
Okay.
Doesn't require it.
It doesn't require a second, but...
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. So you have another candidate, I guess, Mr. Kasakian? Mr. Ajamiyan, read into record, please.
Thank you.
D would be appointment of boards, board and commission members nominated by Councilmember Kasakian, Henrik Sardar Abegyan, Parks Recreation and Community Service Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'd like to nominate Henrik Sardar Abegyan, who has been a resident of the city of Glendale since he first stepped foot here in the United States in 1988 as a child refugee from Iran. At the time, he was only eight, but he quickly discovered the numerous parks and recreational areas in the city that we have to offer. From an early age, Mr. Sardar Abegyan loved sports, especially basketball, soccer, and tennis. His family resided on Patterson Avenue, just a few steps from Fremont Park. So he spent endless hours at the park playing basketball, soccer, and tennis along with riding his bicycle with his younger brother and friends. And during the summer of '92, he discovered the park's summer program, which left an indelible mark on him as a young man. He is graduate of Columbus Elementary, Toll Middle School, and Hoover High School. And as Mr. Sardar Abegyan entered college at Cal Poly Pomona, he went back to his alma mater to help a troubled incoming freshman as a teacher's assistant. He also worked with We Care for Youth on numerous community projects. Mr. Sardar Abegyan has also been a member of the Home Entertainment Glendale ARRA chapter since the age of eight. He began his lifelong dedication to the ARRA organization as an athlete who had sold him basketball and ping pong at the early age of eight, after which he applied what he had learned to become a coach, which he continues to do to this day. Mr. Sardar Abegyan also continues to play basketball on the ARRA team as an adult and has been a member of the chapter's executive board since 2017. And his involvement with the community has also propelled him towards his alma mater once more, where he joined the Hoover High School basketball coaching staff in 2005, first as an assistant and eventually the head coach of the varsity team, where he was named Coach of the Year in 2008. Mr. Sardar Abegyan is currently an attorney with his own personal injury practice located right here in Glendale.
tennis. His family resided on Patterson Avenue, just a few steps from Fremont Park. Um, so he spent endless hours at the park playing basketball, soccer, and tennis, along with riding his bicycle with his younger brother and friends. And during summer of ninety-two, he discovered the park's summer program, which left an indelible mark on him as a young man. He is graduate of Columbus Elementary, Toll Middle School, and Hoover High School. And as Mr. Sardar Abegyan entered college at Cal Poly Pomona, he went back to his alma mater to help a troubled incoming freshman as a teacher's assistant. He also worked as with We Care for Youth on numerous community projects. Mr. Sardar Abegyan has also been a member of the home management Glendale ARA chapter since the age of eight. He began his lifelong dedication to the ARA organization as an athlete, who had sold in basketball and ping pong at the early age of eight, after which he applied what he had learned to become a coach, which he continues to do to this day. Mr. Sardar Abegyan also continues to play basketball on the ARA team as an adult and has been a member of the chapter's executive board since twenty seventeen. And his involvement with the community has also propelled him towards his alma mater once more, where he joined the Hoover High School Basketball Coaching Staff in two thousand and five, first as an assistant and eventually the head coach of the varsity team, where he was named Coach of the Year in two thousand and eight. Mr. Sardar Abegyan is currently an attorney with his own personal injury practice located right here in Glendale. He has made it a point to serve the community and often takes on pro bono cases for those in need. Since opening his office doors in twenty twelve, Mr. Sardar Abegyan hosts an annual toy drive in which toys are raised and then passed out to local charitable organizations. He is a resident of Glendale along with his wife and two boys. The family frequently spends time at Brand Park, Fremont Park, and Fern Soccer Complex. Whether it's hiking or using the fields, Mr. Sardar Abegyan understands the importance of having a city full of healthy community members with endless outdoor opportunities, especially as the city encounters further development. And with that, I would put forth Mr. Sardar Abegyan's nomination for council's approval.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
What's next?
Next would be consent items, including minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Thank you, Ms. 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 Devine?
Thank you. Pursuant to our disclosure ordinance, I must dis- uh, disclose that I am currently on the advisory board of Adventist Health, uh, regarding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, now.
Motion a second for the consent counter.
Anybody?
I'll move the consent counter there.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, what's next, please?
Next would be, s- next would be city council staff comment.
Uh, any council, Ms. Devine, Ms. Devine?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I want to make an announcement about the, um, uh, thirty-first Annual Women Achievers Symposium that's brought to, uh, our community by Business Life Magazine. And I'm proud to say that I will be a part of a Business Life Leadership Panel. Uh, and, uh, I will be, uh, on this panel with Supervisor Catherine Barker, Mayor Sharon Springer from Burbank, former mayor Emily Gable Liddy, and, uh, several other mayors. So, um, I just want to let women and men, uh, in our community, if you would like to, uh, uh, come to or join us in this virtual symposium, uh, go to women@businesslife.com. It is on October twenty-sixth, that is Monday, this coming Monday, and, uh, and join us for the panel discussion. Uh, I would also like to, uh, secondly mention, uh, that the council, uh, received a, um, a, an email or a text from Assembly Member Quick, uh, congratulating us and complimenting us on our enactment of the Mylar Balloon Ordinance. And in that, uh, email, he said he tried to phase, uh, these balloons, um, in, uh, phased them out in twenty sixteen, but he was met with heavy opposition. Well, I want to tell him that we were met with heavy opposition too, but we persisted. And, uh, so again, to my colleagues, good job. And finally, um, if Eliza Papazian is, is there tonight, um, several weeks ago, I received a, um, a suggestion from Stephen Meek, uh, about honoring the memory of those residents in Glendale, uh, who succumbed to the COVID nineteen. And so the city is going to do a virtual COVID nineteen memorial, and I would like for, uh, if Eliza is there to please, uh, let our residents know how they can take part, uh, in this to, uh, to memorialize and honor, uh, the victims of COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Councilmember Devine. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian and councilmembers, Eliza Papazian, Public Information Officer. On Friday, October sixteenth, uh, the city of Glendale unveiled a virtual COVID nineteen memorial to honor and celebrate the lives of Glendale residents, um, we've lost to COVID nineteen. The virtual memorial, as seen on the screen, um, can be found by visiting glendaleca.gov/covidmemorial. We encourage all family members, friends, neighbors, and colleagues to share stories about their loved ones through a short form that can be accessed through the webpage. The virtual memorial will host submitted stories and photos of residents that will be available for viewing on this page. And if I can ask Adam to scroll down, you can see exactly where these stories and photos will be, um, available for viewing. Thank you.
Thank you, Eliza.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Uh, Councilmember Najarian?
Yes, if Ms. Devine is.
Hi.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, I was a little, um, last meeting, I was a little emotional, um, and, uh, talked about the, the war in Armenia and Artsakh. And I, I asked, um, the Glendale organizations, anyone listening, to give us their support. And what I learned is that there were many organizations already, uh, expressing their support for the Armenian community in Artsakh. And I had, uh, a week of wonderful discussions with, uh, several other groups who explained exactly what they had been planning and what they were doing. So I just want to thank, and this is, this is not an exhaustive list, um, if I've, if I've missed your group, I'm sorry, but the ones that, that I'm aware of at the moment and, and that I haven't forgotten, um, are the YWCA, Tara Peterson, uh, Black in Glendale, Ta'ita, uh, the Committee for an Anti-Racist Glendale, the Glendale Latino Association, Glendale Awa, the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, Sunrise Rotary, Glendale Bar Association, the Comfort Women Redress Association. Thank you all for showing your support, uh, and there are others. Uh, this is not an exhaustive list. If I, if I haven't mentioned your name, it is by no means intentional, but I do want to thank you. Um, uh, it's, it's a wonderful thing you did, and it feels, it gives a, just a little bit of comfort knowing that, um, the pain that you're feeling is not only within the Armenian community, but that others are, are sharing and are, um, are taking it to heart. Of course, uh, my colleagues, uh, last week, uh, my non-Armenian colleagues, let me say that, expressed their strong support, so I do appreciate that as well. Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I may be mistaken, I was, I was under the impression that, um, some time ago, the city of Glendale had issued a resolution, uh, supporting and I, uh, recognizing the independence of the Republic of Artsakh. I thought we had done that. I, I talked to staff and they couldn't locate it, but of course, we've named the street and we've had our, our cultural events. I'd like to know if we could put that on the agenda for next week. States are doing it, California has already done it, uh, Hawaii has done it, Michigan, um, we're just little Glendale, but I think we're a significant part of the Armenian community. So if we could put that on the agenda for next week, um, we could discuss it and of course, um, have some more discussion on that.
Do we need a second? Okay, we, we have seconds, so, okay.
Okay, so my last, my last item, um, is a bit of good news, at least for me, and that was, uh, there was a final adjudication of the general fund transfer case. Uh, Mr. Garcia, could you give us just a brief, you know, I don't need the, the legal rationale, but just a brief summary of what the, what the final judgment in the, um, Court of Appeal, um, stated?
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, as Councilmember Najarian noted, we did, uh, receive the result in our, the remand trial of our general fund transfer case, which has been going on since two thousand and fourteen. Um, and so the Court of Appeal in two thousand and eighteen had reversed the trial court's earlier decision, finding that, uh, the general fund transfer, uh, constituted a tax which needed to be refund, refunded, uh, and remanded for the purpose of determining whether or not the two thousand and thirteen electric rates constituted a tax under Proposition twenty, twenty-six. And ultimately, to cut to the chase, the court ruled that the, the rate plan in, in effect in two thousand and thirteen did not constitute a tax increase. As a result, there's no need to, to refund any general fund monies back to the electric fund or, or no, and no need to refund any electric fund monies, uh, back to, uh, for that purpose. So, um, the, it's a very good result, obviously, and, um, we are excited about it. And the final judgment, that, that was the court's ruling as of last week, the judgment will be entered as sometime in December, um, and we'll see whether or not there's an appeal. I hope that there is not, and I hope the parties, uh, have a chance to look through that and see the thoroughness of the Court of Appeal's decision and the trial court's decision in our case, and, and we'll decide to move forward for the benefit of, uh, Glendale's taxpayers and ratepayers. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Garcia. Thank you to your staff and the other legal team that worked on this. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Uh, Mr. Kasakian?
Um, I, I don't have much else, um, to add except for, um, I, I want, I want to just share that with my colleagues and with staff, a personal decision that I've come to, um, and that is based on the events that are transpiring in, um, Armenia and Artsakh with Azerbaijan and Turkish attacks, um, on, uh, the sovereign soil of Armenia, on the peace-loving people of Artsakh. Uh, that has come to light that a number of, um, groups, companies, public relations, and lobbyist firms in the United States, some operating here in Los Angeles, are, uh, recipients of funds directly by, from the Republic of Turkey and Azerbaijan, um, in an effort for these firms to put them in a more positive light despite their heinous war crimes and aggressive actions and, um, attacks on democracy, both within the borders of their own country, but now, um, regionally and against, uh, their neighbors. So, um, I have penned a letter, will send a copy of it to our city attorney and for anyone else that wishes to see it, um, stating that I will not meet with any of the following lobbyists and public relations firms hired by the government of Turkey and/or Azerbaijan or organizations that directly advocate for the governments of Turkey and Azerbaijan. And among these are Mercury Public Affairs, DLA Piper, Reitberg Toreg LLP, Amsterdam &amp; Partners LLP, King &amp; Spalding LLP, Ballard Partners, Capital Council LLC. Um, as, uh, current council member and former city clerk who was, um, charged with running our elections, the datum of our democratic system of governments, I cannot in good conscience meet with any agents of foreign governments that, uh, specifically oppress their people, free speech, uh, free elections, civilian protests, and disallowed discourse that challenges these autocratic regimes in both Turkey and Azerbaijan. Um, if these firms wish to do some good with their resources, they will terminate their contracts with these regimes and focus their work on strengthening the cause of democracy at home and abroad. And as US citizens, we must demand more from companies that do business in our state, in our communities, and in our country, and put American principles ahead of making a profit instead of selling themselves to the highest bidder. So I still welcome meetings and listening to all my constituents and celebrate our constituents' diverse ethnic backgrounds, faiths, genders, sexual orientations, disabilities, and religious beliefs. Moreover, I welcome hearing from those persons who cannot pay powerfully, powerful lobbying firms and PR firms to have us, their representatives, hear them. My decision should be a clear message to the Republics of Turkey and Azerbaijan that their ill-gotten money will not buy them access to our American democratic institutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rott.
Yes, hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I have a couple things. So I want to start, uh, with, uh, our clean energy plans. Uh, we had, uh, big progress last week with our move into clean energy. As we all know, there are a lot of people that are very excited about what we, um, approved, especially the virtual power plant, which, uh, has yet to go to contract, and I guess it'll still come back to us for final approval, but nonetheless, um, the fact that we're moving forward on that was a great, uh, step in the right direction. And again, I want to thank GWP, um, for bringing these forward because, um, these are complex programs, especially the virtual power plant. At the same time, there's still a lot more we need to, to do, and we don't have a lot of time, um, both because of the climate crisis that is getting more and more pressing, as well as, uh, state legislation that is going to be, um, forced us to move more quickly. So there are a number of things that are on us to fully explore before we come back and make any final decisions on investments in fossil fuels. And I'm gonna list, uh, five things, and, uh, I will get to, uh, the point where I'm gonna seek a second, um, uh, from one of my colleagues on this, but let me just, uh, lay out the list first. Um, and, and these are not new, I've mentioned these before, but, uh, uh, it's, uh, there's a lot to do and it's confusing, so I'm trying to consolidate it here. So number one, um, I need to move, um, to look at solar and storage on commercial sites, which is, uh, uh, an important opportunity that we have not touched. So something along the lines of sunrun, but for the non-residential space, and that would include, you know, large, uh, parking lots and things like that. So that's number one. Number two, I want us to really, uh, look at, um, the, uh, demand response programs or demand management programs for our top accounts, uh, as well as energy efficiency programs specifically targeting our top fifty to one hundred customers. Number three, uh, I want us to take a look at our feed-in tariff rates and how we can adjust them, uh, the way LA has done to maximize solar resources in the city. Uh, number four, I want us to look at the caps that we currently have in place, uh, that limit local solar as well as energy efficiency, uh, to see that if we can, you know, uh, unlock some potential opportunities there. And number five, we would like us to look at more aggressively deploying time of use rates so that we can create incentives to shift demand naturally away from peak hours. So those are five very important, uh, elements of our, of our local clean energy, uh, programs that, that I want us to, um, to do more work in. Additionally, the previous council asked for some things, um, last year, or may have been, yeah, it was last year, I believe, um, these were the plans to achieve a hundred percent zero carbon by twenty thirty. Um, number two, renegotiation with, uh, LA Department of Water and Power so that we can do a better job of resource sharing among the three utilities that are in our balancing area. And number three, uh, stepping up our efforts to participate in new transmission opportunities. So considering that, um, there is so much to do, uh, I would like to, uh, get a second from one of my colleagues to instruct staff to bring back bimonthly progress reports to the council, which provide current status and projected completion dates for all of the above items. And I would like to ask that the first report come no later than mid-December so we can see something before we all, uh, go on, on ho- uh, our holidays. Um, so if I could get a second from one of my colleagues, uh, that is my ask, it's for reporting at this point, um, but I think, you know, it, it'll be a good way to get this thing started.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Devine.
If I may, if I may, just, just, uh, briefly, so it, it takes two council members to, um, agendize something and obviously working with the, the mayor to, uh, control the timing of that. Um, so I would say if we're gonna, um, from a, just a logistical standpoint and an actual dictation of staff, it would take a majority to actually direct staff to bring it back at a certain time and to do it on a bi- bimonthly basis, kind of like what we do with the, the monthly report. So my suggestion would be working with the mayor to agendize that, that first discussion, and then the council can thereafter give direction on how to, how to proceed going forward on those monthly reports.
Okay, uh, bimonthly, but that's fine.
Bimonthly, correct.
So, okay, so is that, are we okay as far as mid-December, or do I have a?
Well, I think it's probably advisable, like, it's on the agenda, it's on the list. I think then, um, you know, Mr. Galani is gonna have to work with, uh, Mr. Zernshop and, and figure out the timing of bringing back that first report, and then you'll have to have a discussion as far as how often these come, these reports come back.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, so my, my next item is, um, on COVID enforcement, you know, um, I'm hearing a lot of concern, I'm sure my colleagues are, about enforcement of the rules around gatherings, especially parties and face coverings, especially large groups in, in parks and, and elsewhere. Um, and it may be, you know, a little bit more of a concern now because we do put our playgrounds open and we have people gathering there. Um, also, I know that the governor has changed some of the rules on gatherings, and, um, a little bit concerned that this could send, uh, the wrong signal to people that were out of the woods. of the woods. But we, you know, we know we need to keep community transmission low if we have any hope of getting the county out of the most restrictive tier for COVID. So I wanted to see if I could get an update from the police chief on the current situation with enforcement, anything he can tell us about the, you know, the work we're doing, the citations we've given, how we're handling parties. We get a lot of questions about parties and people frustrated that they're calling in and not, and not seeing these parties cease. In some cases, there are locations where they are occurring repeatedly. So if the chief could give us a little update on that, and if Mr. Takhtalian perhaps can tell us if, what he knows about these new rules around gatherings, I think that would be helpful for the community.
Okay, Mr. Takhtalian is here. Chief Povolitis is here too. So, okay, Mr. Takhtalian.
Thank you, Mayor Agajanian, members of council. Mr. Rottman, you're absolutely correct, there are a number of new developments. Earlier, about two weeks ago, the state did change some of their protocols with respect to gatherings and expanded the opportunity for people to gather. And in similar fashion, L.A. County Department of Health issued some protocols last week. Whereas up until now, we've indicated that no public gatherings were allowed, the county's new regulations do allow for up to three households to gather in a open outdoor space. That still requires that the location be outdoors, it still requires that people continue to wear face coverings, it still requires that people maintain their six-foot separations. And by outdoors, what they're referring to is either an outdoor space like a backyard that's not enclosed on all four sides, or in a public park. But it's really important to stress that this does not mean that we can still go out there and have birthday parties or other large gatherings where we have individual groups of three all there for, you know, one gathering. In the protocols that the county has issued, it specifically outlaws multiple groups of three gathering for the purposes of celebrating something or participating in a single event. That's the primary developments with respect to the protocols, and we have the police chief here who can talk about a little bit more about enforcement unless you have any specific questions related to this for me.
No, that's good, thank you.
Chief Povolitis.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Rottman, the police department does continue to enforce in conjunction with code enforcement. We handle certain parts and code enforcement handles other parts of this. We started this in August, and we actually assigned a task force in order to have some dedicated folks to it. Since that time, I'm going to say that we've done almost 3,000 observations between, we've gone to 3,000 places to look and check. We still find most people are in compliance. Officers still do have some discretion. We have issued 102 citations based on those. One of the other things that we have done is because we do find people in compliance, our Glendale Police Foundation had actually given us some funding where we have some gift cards when we do find people in compliance. The officers do also have the discretion to reward somebody with like a $10 gift card for those that are doing things right. Code enforcement has, looks like has issued eight citations, 13 notices of violations, and has conducted 700 inspections since November. With the parties, we do respond to them. The new state regulations will add a bit of a wrinkle to that for us in terms of it now allows gatherings from three households. So that's going to, that will present a bit of a challenge, but we do, when we get a call, we do respond to them, and the officers will try to sort out what's happening out
Okay, if I could follow up just a quick question?
Yes, please, Mr. Rott.
The chief, so you said 102 citations. How many of those have been individuals, and are any of those businesses?
As far as I know, I believe most of those 102 are individuals. Most of the, most of the businesses are actually handled by code enforcement.
I see, okay. And if you could explain, when somebody calls and they say there's a party down the street, what's your process? You know, I know you need a warrant to go into somebody's house, so you're not going to just go in, but what do you do? You knock on the door, and how does, can you kind of walk through how that works?
Yeah, I mean, we will dispatch officers. I mean, we've done this for years and years with, with party calls that disturb neighborhoods. So we'll go knock on the door, we're trying to find the responsible party. These days, we do two things now. One is we obviously deal with anything that might be noise-related. The other thing is we also advise them, at least prior, that no gatherings are actually allowed and request compliance with that.
Okay, and if you, if they open the door and you see there's a group in there, there's a party going on, what are you able to do at that time, other than, you know, tell them they shouldn't be doing that?
I mean, officers have the, I leave officers with some discretion to assess that situation, and they have the options of, you know, issuing, issuing the warning to gain compliance, to try and sort it out, and they also have the option of issuing a citation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Chief, it's for the chief.
Yeah, chief is here.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I know. Chief, when do we reach a point where the public should know what the regulations are about social gatherings like that, and just when you knock on that door and there they all are with no masks and not social distancing, that the police just don't, just give them a citation? When do we reach that point? I mean, shouldn't everyone know that by now?
As I said, and with the, with the new regulations, this is going to add a challenge for the police department. Because as of this last weekend, it now allows three households to gather. And so sorting that out will be something that we're going to, that we're going to have to try and figure out, sort of, if you will, on the fly.
Yeah, but if they're inside, the regulation is that they must be outside.
Correct.
And have face coverings. So if they're inside and they have neither, then when do we reach the point where you just slap a citation on them?
As I said, and I've left that to the discretion of the officers. As I said, our primary goal is to, is to gain compliance with the gathering, with anything related to gatherings. And then if the officers think they don't have compliance, or it doesn't look like it's a family, then they do have the option to issue the citation.
Okay.
If I could just follow up.
Mr. Rott.
I don't want to, you know, I don't want to, I mean, there are a lot of people that write to us out of frustration because they're seeing, you know, these parties go on repeatedly. Maybe they're given a warning, maybe they're given a citation, and they just feel like, well, that's just the cost of doing business, and they, they continue to have these parties. I don't know how widespread it is, but it's something that people are frustrated with, and I don't know what we do to, to stop this. Those are the worst situations, right? Those indoor parties are the super-spreader events that we want to avoid. I'm less concerned, you know, somebody walking down the street or a couple people, and they're not wearing a mask, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to get up in arms about that. But those parties, we really have to find a way to, you know, prevent those from happening, and if they're happening, break them up. They're just the worst.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. May I just interject here? I know there's a lot of concerns and questions on this, and I allowed a little bit of latitude on the question, but we're starting to get to the point where we're starting to discuss the matter, and it's not on the agenda. So my suggestion is either, you know, obviously, council members have sort of individual enforcement questions, they can certainly follow up with staff, whether it's my office, the chief's office, or city manager's office, and we'll work with you on that. If you want to have a discussion, you can certainly agendize that, but I think we've already gotten the council direction on, on how to proceed on these, and we continue to try to do. And as the chief noted, it is a very, you know, it's a case-by-case effort, and that we need to, we need to allow the officers some discretion in doing their jobs to enforce these difficult-to-enforce and interpret rules.
Mr. Mayor and Mr.
Yes, Ms. Devine.
I'd like to see this agendized, and perhaps council can rule on whether we should authorize our police department to start issuing citations for in-house large gatherings with no face masks, no social distancing, no, no discretion, just if you knock on that door and there's a party going on, you just get them, you just give them a citation. I think maybe it's time for us to take that next step. Do I, is there anyone?
I'll second that, I'll second that.
Okay, we'll bring it back at appropriate time. I would note, we just, we cannot write a law that gives the authorities, the officers no discretion. But I think that the question will be the level of enforcement and the aggressiveness of the enforcement. We understand that, but we will not be able to write a regulation or provide direction that orders our officers to enforce a law without any individual discretion on the
So therefore, it wouldn't do any good to bring it back.
I didn't say that. I'm just saying, we cannot write a law that directs law enforcement officers to enforce a law with zero discretion for those officers.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
In the process of bringing that back, we can certainly discuss why that's the case, and I'm happy to discuss that with you off or online.
And by my own personal experience, it's very hard to enforce. I saw a police officer comes, but then there are like 30 people, and there are two police officers, and they tried to remind them that they can't be together, 30 people with no mask, and, but it's very difficult. We have to realize that police officers, also, they have their limitations. So that's what they were telling me, because I asked the question, and they were saying it's very hard to ask them to do it, isn't it, chief? Yeah, he says yes, I guess. All right, however, all right, I guess we have city council comments, everybody already spoke about different issues, and I will add that I want to recommend everybody who's watching us now, you know, the situation is Karabakh or Artsakh is dire, is a very unbelievable situation, that war after twice of the truce. On October 10th, Russia was involved and asked both prime ministers, I mean, Prime Minister of Armenia, I mean, Foreign Minister of Armenia and Foreign Minister of Azerbaijan, they met with Foreign Minister Lavrov, Foreign Minister of Russia, but nothing happened. The war still was continuing. On October 18th, French President Macron asked both sides, and they agreed to stop fighting the war, to stop the war. But as you know, this still is going on, the situation is bad. The only thing I want to add is those who want to help Armenians, there is an organization, armeniafund.org, that is nonprofit organization, been involved with Artsakh, and they built schools and hospitals and other major buildings, which is in there for the benefit of general public. If you can donate to that, armeniafund.org, that will be appreciated. Okay, now, staff comments, is there any comments by staff?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any staff.
You don't have any? Okay. What's next, Mr. Ajumya?
Community event announcements, three-minute portion. We have five callers waiting.
Okay, now I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to the community event announcements. Okay, each speaker will be given three minutes to share their comments. Please, statement should be within the three-minute limit. Thank you, first caller, please.
Mary Freeman, you're live, Mary.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff, thank you very much for your attention. My name is Marie Freeman, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association. Recently, we submitted an extensive list of comments on the draft DEIR for the proposed biogas power plant for Shoal Canyon. In the course of the analysis and review, we found a number of concerns that exist regardless, regardless of whether a power plant is built on the landfill or not built there. We feel the city should address these situations right away, even as the DEIR itself for a power plant is slowly making its way through the CEPO process. Therefore, sort of as a preview for the near future and what to expect, please expect to hear from a series of speakers over the next weeks or months who briefly address the following concerns, and they interestingly fall into the categories of the elements of the ancient world, fire, air, water, and earth. Briefly, in terms of fire, with or without a power plant, the community wants fire mitigation on the landfill, an additional exit route from the surrounding canyons, especially Glen Oaks. Recently, a fire on the landfill noticed by a bicyclist had a listed cause as spontaneous combustion, not very encouraging. In terms of air, the current highly polluting old flares have been operating 24/7 for about two years and were installed many, many years ago. They need to be replaced with updated flares, and that needs to happen as soon as possible. Another person will speak to this issue this evening. In terms of water, we found toxic chemicals in water samples at the foot of the landfill, so additional water quality monitors are needed on that landfill and along Glen Oaks Boulevard. In terms of the earth itself, we should never downplay the ever-present threat of earthquake falls that lie very near this landfill. This community needs reassurance that the current operations, not even new necessarily, but currently, that we have mitigations in place to protect against earthquake damage. More specifically, damage caused by landslides, especially along the access road from Figarola, breaks in pipeline integrity, and fires from gas processing equipment or major power transmission lines. So we'll also continue to seek evidence that the city is preparing for closure within the next 10 or so, maybe even less, years. What may appear to be an asset could be considered a liability. Landfills not only threaten the environment, aesthetics, property value, but in the near future, as this landfill grows and closes, responsibility for the cost, significant cost of decades of ongoing maintenance will fall squarely on Glendale. At the same time, tipping fees and gas will no longer provide income, so Shoal will be a long-term liability and not an asset. Thank you very much for your concern.
Thank you, next caller, please.
Jackie Gish, you live, Jackie?
Yes. Mayor and city council, my name is Jackie Gish. I have been the lead for the Glen Oaks Canyon response to the DEIR for the proposed biogas project at Shoal. As Marie just said, we have also been analyzing or looking at current conditions at the landfill. My remarks tonight will focus on the issue of current pollution due to the old flares. As you all probably know, 100% of the collected landfill gas has been flared at Shoal since April 2018. The flares are old, likely installed in the 1990s or even earlier. These flares do not meet current flare standards due to the high level of pollutants such as oxides of nitrogen, a smog-producing chemical. The January 2019 AQMD flare rule requires that Glendale start the process for getting new flares installed after two years of exceeding 20% of the capacity for a given flare. So in January 2021, Glendale will have to tell AQMD its plan for the flares. Currently, nine of the 12 flares are being used full-time, each using about 80% of its capacity. Hence, the rule would say that Glendale would have to replace at least nine flares. After reviewing the DEIR for the biogas plant and data on current landfill gas flow rates provided by the sanitation district, we found that the four engines proposed in the DEIR cannot utilize all the gas currently produced by the landfill. So even if the biogas project proceeds, at least 10 to 25% of the gas will have to be flared at all times, and more if there is maintenance on one of the engines. This translates into the likely requirement to replace at least two to four flares, even with the biogas project. We therefore would request that the city council and GWP look seriously into replacing at least some of the old flares as soon as possible to improve air quality and comply with the AQMD flare rule. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gish. Next caller, please.
Lucy Petrosian. Lucy, you're live. Go ahead. Lucy, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Go ahead. You're live.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Agajanian. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes. Good evening.
Members of Glendale City Council, staff, and residents.
We are listening. Lower your volume.
My name is Lucy Petrosian. My name is Lucy Petrosian, and I'm the chairperson of the Armenian National Committee of America Glendale Chapter. As representatives of the Armenian-American community of Glendale, ANCA Glendale would like to urge Glendale City Council to formally recognize the Republic of Artsakh and to commit to divesting from funds that benefit the government of Turkey or Azerbaijan. Both Turkey and Azerbaijan are pursuing a violent war in the regions of the independent republics of Artsakh and Armenia. For over three weeks now, schools, hospitals, churches, and homes of Armenians have been under attack by these two dictatorships. We have suffered numerous civilian and military casualties because of the vile efforts of Azerbaijan and Turkey to colonize Artsakh and expel Armenians from their homeland. Despite the two humanitarian efforts on ceasefire that were agreed upon, Azerbaijan and Turkey continue to undermine the sovereignty and self-determination of the people of Artsakh in this aggressive and violent pursuit. We would like to thank the city of Glendale for releasing a statement that condemns the Turkish-Azerbaijani aggression that is currently taking place on historic Armenian land. However, solidarity cannot stop there. To apply pressure on the systematic aggression led by Azerbaijan and Turkey, we need you to further stand with the Armenian community and recognize the independent Republic of Artsakh. The only way our brothers and sisters in Artsakh can live in peace is if the independent Republic of Artsakh is recognized by the world. We strongly urge the city of Glendale to set an example that the international community would follow. Moreover, ANCA Glendale is ready to work with the city of Glendale to ensure that our city is not investing in any means that benefits the government of Turkey or Azerbaijan. It is unacceptable for the city of Glendale to make business deals with countries who participate in active terrorism. We call on the city, with the largest Armenian community outside of Armenia, to expand its stance against this regime by also not allowing products made in Turkey or Azerbaijan to have a presence within our city. We thank you again for your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Petrosian. Next caller, please.
Kate Unger. Kate, you're live.
Hello, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council and staff. This is Kate Unger, speaking on behalf of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, and I'd like to speak about Artsakh, as Mayor Agajanian said, where the situation was extremely dire. GEC joins with other organizations and individuals in the Glendale community in saying that we believe this is an issue that affects our whole community. We recognize, especially in light of Councilmember Najarian's comments, that it's important to speak out publicly. So we have prepared a statement, and I am going to read portions of that right now. The Glendale Environmental Coalition stands in solidarity with the people of Artsakh and Armenia, who wish to dwell in their ancestral homeland and live in peace with the peoples around them. For more than a century, Azerbaijan's fossil fuel resources and infrastructure have played a key role in large-scale wars, conflicts, and disputes. A carbon-based world economy is leading us to global environmental devastation. The people of Artsakh, Armenia, Azerbaijan, Turkey, and the entire world, including the United States, are today experiencing increased conflict, economic crises, and devastating effects of climate change, and all of these can be traced to exploitation of fossil fuels. If Azerbaijan and Turkey achieve their goals, they will not only wipe out the millennia-long Armenian presence in Artsakh and beyond, but will also destabilize the region and possibly the entire world, further damage the international economy, and make it much more difficult to address the global environmental and climate crisis. GEC also wishes to express its support for the members of our local community with connections to Artsakh and Armenia. We deeply feel the distress of events that raise fears and echo the 1915 genocide. All members of our community must come together in rejecting the violence against our friends and family in Artsakh and Armenia. This full statement is going to be posted on GEC's website soon at GEC dot ECO. That's in the works, but it should be there shortly, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, GEC.
Yes, and GEC. Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Mike Mohill, you're live, Mike?
Hi, this is Mike Mohill. Bore or investis labis. To my Armenian friends, my heart goes out to you in your struggle with what's going on in Armenia and the Turkish government. Now for my speech tonight. Last week, I came before this council to discuss the pay increase of our interim city manager, Rubit Galanian. I stated this country and the state of California is seeing record-high unemployment because of the Chinese virus. New Councilman Dan Brotman, who has only been a Glendale resident for about five years and received over $95,000 in campaign money from supporters who live outside of Glendale, wanted to lecture me on the word "Chinese virus" because he found those words offensive. Mr. Brotman, I have lived in the city of Glendale since the age of 12, and today I am 78 years of age, and I know my city and its problems. For your edification, did you know that the Ebola virus, which was first identified in 1976, was named after the Ebola River that runs through the Democratic Republic of the Congo? In 1919, the swine flu origin was identified in a pig. In the early 1900s, the Rocky Mountain flu origin was in the Rocky Mountains in the state of Montana. In 1996, the bird flu was first identified in geese in Communist China. With the 1918 Spanish flu, the experts do not know its origin. Mr. Brotman, but we know the 2020 novel coronavirus, COVID, better known as the Chinese virus, has its origin in a lab in Wuha Province in Communist China. So, Mr. Brotman, don't lecture me. Don't lecture me. If you do not like how things are in Glendale, please, by all means, move back to China. Councilman Dan Brotman, I am Jewish. I've experienced racism in Glendale and other places, and like many, I acknowledge it and then moved on with my life. I'm not a racist, but you represent the radical groups of Black Lives Matter and Antifa. The two founders of BLM are Marxist-trained as communists. You represent the far-left wing of the Democratic Party, or better known as the Progressive Democrat. There's nothing progressive where you have governors and mayors from progressive liberal cities like Portland, Seattle, or Minnesota, who allow looting and rioting in their streets. These same politicians call for the new funding of their police departments and hire private police officers as bodyguards and security guards at their homes.
Thank you.
Councilman Brotman?
Thank you.
If this council ever elected you as the mayor of Glendale, you would be happy to turn Glendale into a mini Portland, Seattle, or Minnesota.
Thank you.
If it climb over 250%.
Thank you. Your time is up. Now I let you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. Okay. What's next, please?
Next would be action items in management services regarding consideration of a resolution naming the Glendale Police Community Room in honor of a former Glendale mayor and council member, Richard Rick Reyes. One, resolution naming the Glendale Police Community Room in honor of former Glendale mayor and council member, Richard Rick Reyes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I was going to ask, but however, okay. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. This item is before you in response to a request from council a couple of weeks ago to name the Glendale Police Community Room in honor of the former mayor and council member, Rick Reyes. Mr. Takhtalian, who authored the report, is here. If you like a brief overview or is available for questions, and I believe Mr. Reyes is on the call as well.
Mr. Takhtalian will talk about this? Who will present?
If you like a report, Mr. Takhtalian can do it. Otherwise, he's available for questions.
I don't know. If my council members, they want any, hear any report or listen to a report, or we can go ahead with this item.
I'd like to hear a report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Takhtalian.
I want to hear about Mr. Reyes. There he is.
In that case, good evening again, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council.
Hi.
I can provide a quick update or a quick summary of how we've gotten here a couple of weeks ago. About three weeks ago, a request was made by council members, asking that a report come back for consideration to rename the Glendale Police Community Room after a former council member, Rick Reyes. Rick Reyes, actually, it was not only just a council member. He started working for the city of Glendale in 1962. He worked in a number of different capacities. He was a maintenance worker. He was a jailer. And then at some point, he decided to become a police officer in 1966. That led to a 27-year career as a police officer, where 18 of those years were served as a school resource officer in the School Resource Officer Program, which coincidentally, he helped to initiate in 1968. He served in those capacities until about 1988, at which point he was contacted by the city manager's office here in the city of Glendale and asked to come over for a change in employment to some degree. And he served as the city's first community relations coordinator, working out of the city manager's office. His role was really becoming a liaison and a bridge between the city, the police department, city departments, and the community. In 1993, after 33 years, Rick decided that it was time to retire, but he wasn't ready to hang up his hat. A short time later, he decided to run for city council and was successful when Glendale voters elected him for the council seat, for which he served from 1993 to 1997. During that time period, he served as the city's mayor from a period of 1995 to 1996. So based upon all of these different accomplishments and contributions, both as a civilian, as sworn officer, and an elected official, a request was made by one of our council members to consider renaming the Glendale Police Community Room after Rick Reyes. And Rick, I can see he's on the call and ready and prepared to answer any questions, or I'm sure he'd like to make some comments himself after council's discussion.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, you want to, do you have any time?
Oh, I would love to. Yes, thank you.
So the floor is yours?
First of all, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Because at one time, because I've been retired for a while, I was hoping to come back to visit the chambers, city hall, and civic center, but not like this. I'm on a camera. I'm, I'm coming, instead of being there in person, I'm now on a camera looking in. And it's quite funny, because when we first started filming or televising city council, I was the first mayor to run it, and we were looking for, are we going to get set directors? Are we going to get powder on our cheeks and lipstick on so we look good? It was a new phenomenon for us. So here we are. I'm going to say, yes, I want to answer some questions. I want to thank the city council, those of you who still remembered me. I was already in the area of going on with life without any type of official recognition from the city, of which I love. Artie, you read that perfectly. I even had to remember, did I start in '62? You were right on. And so I'm overly joyed for this nomination. I am so happy. My family keeps trying to keep me from floating up in the clouds. They're holding me down. I love this city. I've served every part of it. I do miss the interactions at city hall, the challenges that I see you have. Wow. I'm kind of glad I'm retired. But I miss working with the kids at school, working in a community. And yes, I was appointed the first community director, relations. I can't even think of the word.
Liaison?
I'll move for that. Relations coordinator. There you go. I'm missing a few things with my mind now, but I still remember everything as much as possible, and I'm just honored. I'm honored for it. And I don't know how this work got out, but I was getting texts. I was getting texts about congratulations. I said, for what? And they said, it's out that you're going to, they're going to name this, the police department, department community room after you. And I knew we were going to discuss it, but I didn't know whether it already occurred. I did see the chief there. I was hoping he was still there so I could throw some rocks at him, in a good way, in a good way. I love him. Anyway, I'm going to stop talking. I'm excited. I'm honored, deeply honored. I hope to someday talk with you at lunch whenever this COVID stuff is over, and let you know a little bit, a lot about me. And it's awesome to have been to do that. I'm so honored. And I'm going to keep quiet now. I want to go with Najarian. Is he smiling?
Thank you.
Yes, now.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
I want to see some smiles. Thank you, Artie.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Before you go ahead, the person, Mr. Reyes, the person who was reading about you was city...
Deputy city manager.
Deputy city manager, Takhtalian was reading your biography. Okay, Mr. Kasakh.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and fellow council members. You know, it is great to see you, Rick, and it is an honor and a privilege to ask for this renaming of the community room. I believe the Rick Reyes community room has a very nice ring to it, and I think it's important for us to remember, when I brought this item forward, I thought it would be a great way of commemorating Hispanic Heritage Month here in the city. You were one of the earliest Latino members of the police force of the city council. There were others along with you and since, but you were a trailblazer and the only person who served, worked in the city, especially in law enforcement, who went on to serve both in the city manager's office, went on to be elected to city council, when, much like me, you had a momentary lapse of good judgment and decided to run for city council and became mayor as well. So for all of those achievements, I thought it was only appropriate to have this renaming consideration brought to council, and I was very grateful that my colleague, Councilmember Devine, seconded this request. And it is unfortunate that we are all far away tuning in via camera. I didn't know that you were one of the first mayors, or you were the first mayor to run meetings that were televised. So perhaps it's appropriate that now we are doing it this way. Maybe there's something to it. So thank you for everything that you did for the city. Thank you for always having a good humor about you, for always bringing a smile to people's faces, for working with the kids in our schools through the School Resource Officer Program that you started, and for everything that you've done for the city. You truly deserve this honor. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
And I look forward to having the room renamed after a former council member and Mayor Rick Reyes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Devine.
Yeah, very briefly. Hi, Rick.
Hi, caller.
Hi. I just want to say, and Artie, you took the words right out of my mouth, that when people walk into this room, and it's called the Rick Reyes Room, it's just going to bring a smile to their faces, you know? And what a perfect choice for community relations liaison. I think you made that very apparent tonight, that you are a people very apparent tonight, that you are a people person from the get-go. People love you, you, you listen to them, you speak to them, you care about this city, and I think your service has shown that. Love your stories about when working with the, the school kids, and how you taught them how to, how to cross the street when the light was changing, and just teaching them those little things that could maybe one day even save their lives, but, but you made it fun for them, and I know they loved you, and, and I, I was just tickled pink to second this, and I look forward to, to the vote, because I'm sure it's going to happen, so all my best to you, Rick. Well deserved.
Do I have a motion to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, before you vote, we do have a caller on the line.
We have callers on.
And you have me too.
Okay, let's listen to them.
Mike, you're on the line, Mike Mohill.
Hi, congratulations, Rick Reyes, my name is Mike Mohill. You know, it's, it's funny, that I've been, I've been active in the city for about 10 years, and, you know, I never heard of you. In fact, I'm embarrassed to tell you, but I have a community newsletter, and I listed all the Latinos who've been active in, in Glendale city government, both as council people and as directors of the city, and I never heard of you. I'm embarrassed, I don't even know if you even received my community newsletter.
You don't want to?
But again, I want to congratulate you for your awards by the city. Council, long as we're naming rooms after certain, you know, people who've been active in the city government, I think it would be an honor to name the, the city council chambers under, in memory of Harry Zavos. You recall, Harry Zavos came to city council many times to fight the increases in electric and water rate increases, he fought the transfer, he was one of the founding members of the Glendale Coalition for Better Government, which sued the city for the illegal actions.
Right on, Rick.
He was also active with you, Mayor Agajanian, on the town council, where you wanted to have accountability. He would be a great person to name the chamber after, this count, this room here, or even Margaret Hammond, the hat lady. How many times has Margaret come to this council, talked on issues? She's 90 years old today, and she's, it's very difficult for her to get around, but for many years, I remember her coming to council every night. In fact, Councilwoman Paula Divine changed the council, what do we call it, the, the announcement period, or communication, to three minutes, so that Margaret Hammond could come to a meeting early enough and then go home. Unfortunately, Margaret can't drive anymore, but she would be there tonight. I'm sure she knew who Rick Reyes was, because she was active in those days. Unfortunately, I don't know who Rick Reyes is. But again, congratulations, Mr. Reyes. And council member, wouldn't it be nice to honor somebody who's either living right now, to name the chamber after that person, or someone who recently passed away and fought, and fought for the Glendale residents? Thank you very much.
Thank you, next caller.
This is Rick.
Okay. We have more callers. Do you want to wait until we, or you want to, Mr. Najarian, you want to speak now?
Mayor, that was, there is somebody calling right now, I see it lighting up, but we can take, we can take Councilmember Najarian, if you'd like, first.
Okay, Mr. Najarian.
I got no respect in this council, Rick, you see, you're good thing you left. Before I talk about Rick Reyes, my good friend, I do want to use Mr. Mohill's remarks as a springboard. I think we need to have a discussion in council as setting a policy as to how we will name buildings, rooms, monuments, parks after individuals in the community. If someone would, just, just so we can get, get some framework. Now, to Rick Reyes, and I don't know who did that biography, but you got a C minus, because you left out a very important chapter, that is the chapter of diplomacy of Rick Reyes, who for many, many years was our ambassador from Glendale to our sister city of Rosarita Beach. And many trips were taken by Rick, delivering firefighting equipment, public safety equipment, and he had a very way about him, of course, if you know Rick, you know that way about him. He was very close to the mayor of Rosarita Beach, Hugo, what's his name?
Hugo Torres.
Hugo Torres, and led a delegation of Glendale electeds, he led, led many, but led one in which I was a member, and my family, to Rosarita Beach, where we celebrated their anniversary, and the Mexicans do it very big, and we were honored to be there, and they honored us as their sister city delegation. We had, we had Zizet, we had a few police officers, firefighters were there, we took a parade down the center street of Rosarita Beach, ended up with a luchadera contest, spent some time at the Tequila Museum. Rick was, Rick was very instrumental in that, I mean, of course, it was a lot of fun, but he really did develop warm ties between our sister city and Glendale, and was very helpful in bringing much-needed public safety equipment to the city of Rosarita Beach. And we've been, I, I hope we can rekindle those efforts, Rick. You're, I'm glad to see you're still got that little zip in your step, and you can still tie a tie. So that's all we need to do. And I'm very happy that this room is going to be named after you, we might get a unanimous vote, if you're lucky, and I kid you, but you're, you're a great guy, Rick, done a great service to the city. You don't want that Mohill newsletter, trust me, it's, it's going to be bad news. If, if you get it, just skip the part about me, okay? All that stuff is just.
I have a couple of things to say, let me know when I can.
Okay, and, and I'm very happy for you, Rick, I'm going to wrap it up, glad to see you, and I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Okay, just, just to respond to you, first of all, I have heard of Mr. Mohill, and I thank him for his comments, and everyone else he mentioned, but I'm low-key, I'm very low-key, and that's probably why he didn't hear about me. But outside of that, he was very, it wasn't bad, I didn't mind it. As far as Rosarito, I still stay in touch with the mayor, once you're the mayor, you're always the mayor down there, and the city council people, they told me, whenever I can go down, bring Ara Najarian, Najarian back with me, because they loved you and your two boys that were in the parade. So yes, I still stay in touch with them.
Got a Mexican wife now, it's even better.
No, my goodness, I, I know who the boss is in your family, but anyway, anyway, I, I'm sure she's charming, I say that in jest, and I'm going to stop, but I just had to say that it's good to see you, Paula, Artie, I have not met Mr. Brotman, Mr. Agajanian, I might have met with Larry Zarian at one time, I'm not sure.
Yes.
But he was very pleasant at the time, and I thank everyone. And who's the city manager now, if I can ask, acting?
Rubi Golanyan.
And did he come to us from Public Works?
Yes, sir, yeah, he, he has been with the city for 20 years.
Yes, I met, okay, with that, I just want to say, I met him, and Mike Garcia, thank you.
Mike Garcia is listening to you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, may I have a, do we have a phone call? Do we have a caller?
I, I do have a caller, would you like, Councilmember Brotman to go first, or the caller, Mayor?
Let's listen to the caller, and then we go to Mr. Brotman.
Victoria Valentine, you're live, Victoria?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Valentine.
Yes, hello?
Yes, we were, we are listening.
Okay, hi, I have a comment to make for Mr. Rick Reyes, yes, I remember Mayor Reyes, and my question is, is this the building that's going to get the sign, or just the room? If it's a building, I hope he finds, he chooses a fancy, grandiose, colorful turquoise signage over the top of the wall, so you can see it by driving by, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
It's a happy occasion.
Thank you, it's a community room.
I didn't know he was still living.
All right, now, Mr. Brotman.
I, I just wanted to say, you know, we've never met, and I hope I can have a coffee with you, or a bite to eat, when, when we get out of this COVID mess, just seeing you for the first time here, and hearing your story, you're, you're somebody that I can tell, I would have a, a really wonderful time sitting down with you, just have a cheerful disposition, a good sense of humor, and, and a great story, so I want to hear more.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Reyes, congratulation to you, and anybody wants to move the item?
I'd like to move the item, or the resolution associated with this report.
That'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Let me think, yes. Next item, please.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Rick.
Thank you all, I love you all, and hope to see you soon.
Thank you, bye.
Next item would be AP City Attorney regarding consideration of adoption or extension of emergency public orders related to COVID-19, state of emergency rent increase freeze, and update on Assembly Bill Number 3088, impact on the city rental eviction moratorium repayment period. One, resolution extending an emergency public order relating, relating to the freeze on residential rent increase. Two, motion providing direction on rental eviction moratorium procedures.
Mr. City Attorney Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, two items before you, one is consideration of the extension of the rent freeze, that is set to expire on October 31st, and the council can extend it for another month if it so chooses. I would note that the county has not yet decided what to do with its rent freeze, which is, is set to expire at the end of this month as well, so that's the only information we have, in terms of some of our other jurisdictions. I would note that, as was noted in some of the briefings, that some of our other cities have either let their rent freeze expire, or never, never doctored one to begin with. So that's the first item, the second item has to do with the eviction, rental eviction moratorium, and the state AB 3088, we discussed it a couple of weeks ago, and, can we get that PowerPoint up, Arm? As, as noted in the report, you know, I needed to make a clarification, correct a mistake that we made in that original report, that AB 3088, 3088 was going to have a repayment period for the past due rent for the period of unpaid rent of March through August of this year, that was going to be 12 monthly installments, and that, that wasn't correct, essentially for that unpaid rent for that period, unpaid rent for that period is going to be due on March 1st, meaning, and when I say due, that means landlords can, can sue tenants who have not paid their rent for that period, commencing on March 1st of 2021. So what I thought I'd do, I prepared this material in the report as an exhibit, and I was just going to go through it again, in terms of the example that we provided the last time, and, and go through it under the new, the new, or under the legislation as, as correctly interpreted, so can you go back to my?
Sure.
Okay, so this was the example we used, where there was $7,000 of unpaid rent for the period of March through August 31st, next slide, please. So if we were operating strictly under the state law repayment period, there would be, for that period of March through August, there would be no unpaid rent due, and then in the green, there, again, for the period of September through January, tenants would have to pay 25% of all the rent due for that period, no later than January 31st, so that results in that 1,875 that would be due. Next slide, please. So under the state law, without, without a local moratorium, the unpaid rent that would be due, would be, all be due in March, meaning, at that point, absent an agreement between the landlord and the tenant, and again, this only applies where you have a situation where the tenant has submitted a COVID-based declaration for the reason that they are unable, unable to pay rent for that period, the rent, the remaining rent will be due, in the example that we provided, it's all essentially due March 1st of 2021, meaning at that point landlords can seek to recover that money in small claims court only, any unpaid rent for this entire period from March of this year through January 31st of next year cannot be a basis for eviction, it's only recoverable in, in small claims court as a monetary, monetary damage. Next slide, please. Under the example where we left our moratorium and our rent repayment period in place, tenants would have to pay 25% of that, that payment in November, I would note that, again, that wouldn't be failure to pay that, that $1,750 payment, using the example we have, failure to make that payment at the end of November would not result in eviction, it's just recoverable in small claims court. And again, for that, that period, that second period in green, that's due at the end of January, next slide, please. And then, here's, here's where the real difference is between our rent repayment period and what's, what is in state law. If we've continued to keep our rent repayment period in, in place, these quarterly payments would be due at the end of February, which is effectively March 1st, and then you'd have two other repayment periods at the end of May, and again, at the end of August, which tenants would have to make that payment up. So there, the real difference between keeping our repayment period in place and, and just deferring to the state, is that whereas going with the state would allow tenants to wait until March 1st of next year to repay all of their rent, as opposed to having that November payment, sticking with our repayment period will allow tenants an additional six months to pay the remainder of that unpaid rent for that period of, of March and August. So it's really a, a policy call for whether the council, we are allowed to keep our repayment period, we just can't extend it or amend it, so it's in effect now, that first rent repayment is due November, it will, will not result in eviction if the tenant fails to pay that, it'll just become a civil debt at that point, but there'll be additional time under our repayment schedule for, for tenants who have been encountering COVID-related circumstances that leads to their inability to pay their, all their rent this year, to have a little bit more time through the end of, of August to repay that, that rent. I think that's the last slide. So those are the two items, again, the rent freeze, whether to extend that another month or longer, and then whether or not to keep our rent repayment period or defer to the state. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Is there any question from Mr. Garcia?
I have a question.
Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, boy, it's an extremely, it's an extremely complicated process and explanation, Mike, I know, because there's different factors coming into play. Let me just ask a few questions, and, and you tell me what, what the deal is. The, the unpaid rent from March to August, regardless, 25% of that is due November 30th.
No, the unpaid rent from September through January of next year, 25% of that is due in end of January, and then for our, our repayment, it is due, it'll depend on which repayment period we choose, so I apologize. So from March through August, under the state law, it's all due, if we defer to the state law, if we default to the state law, maybe better said, it would all be due on March 1st. If we, if we stick with our repayment period, it is, it has to be repaid over a 12-month period, and as the, the council set the repayment period at 25% for every quarter, so the first repayment is the end of November, the second repayment is the end of February, third repayment is the end of May of next year, and then the last repayment will be the end of August of next year.
Okay, and how about the rent between September and?
January, that is controlled by state law, which, regardless, so we, we don't have any discretion on that, that is.
And the rule is what on that?
The rule, the rule is the tenants have to pay at least 25% of that entire amount, so the entire amount of rent from September through January is 25% of that amount, so let's say it was $1,000 a month. So let's say it was a thousand dollars a month for five months, you would owe 20, you would owe 25% of that at, on January 31st. The rest of that is due, uh, can, the tenant can, the landlord can seek recovery of that in small claims courts starting on March 1st of next year, uh, but it will, it is not the basis for eviction. But if, may I, if the tenant does not pay that 25% on January 31st, the landlord can see eviction, uh, for non-payment of that, that rent.
Can you restate the commercial, because I, I've been getting calls, people saw it on the agenda. Can you restate our, what we did in the commercial, uh, tenancies?
Your councilman, Najarian, so the city had a commercial eviction moratorium, um, which with a six-month repayment, uh, it expired, the, the commercial eviction moratorium expired? June or July? June 30th? June 30th. So the repayment period is already commenced and the, any unpaid rent for the period of the moratorium is due six months after the expiration.
And so August rent was due?
Correct. July, July rent was due, August rent was due, September and now October.
With, with eviction, uh, with the eviction?
Correct, although, uh, you know, the eviction courts were closed until October, October 5th of this year.
Okay. All right, but that, but that back rent from March to June, June 30th, the commercial tenants have six months to pay that till the end of the year, basically, December 34th?
I'm not sure that the, the state, I'm not sure that AB 3888 applies to the convert, commercial eviction moratorium.
I don't think it does. I don't think it does. That would be our, that would default to our rule, which says on your back rent before June 30th, you've got six months to make that repayment.
That's correct.
It is very complicated and?
Yeah, and I apologize, I tried to?
No, I mean, it's not you, it's just, we're dealing with different jurisdictions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Devine?
Yeah, I, I have a question, it's probably a elementary question, but while they're repaying this, this 25%, are they paying their regular rent as well?
The, for which period? For any period?
Well, pardon?
For any period or?
Yeah, starting, well, let's, um, starting in November, when they're paying this, according to Glendale ordinance, when they pay their 25%, didn't you say their first payments in November?
So, correct, so effective of September 1st of this year, um, the state mor, there is a state moratorium, for lack of a better term, that if a tenant can identify a COVID-related reason for not being able to pay their rent, and when I say identify, it's just filing a declaration, um, they, they do not have to pay their rent, uh, for those months of September through January, as long as at the, no later than January 31st of next year, they pay at least 25% of the total amount of rent due for that period. So, um, if, if the accumulated rent for, um, the period of September through January was $4,000, by January 31st, the, the tenant would have to pay a thousand dollars, um, by that date.
Okay, so the answer is they're not paying their full rent, they're just paying 25% of everything that they owe?
If they, if they filed a COVID declaration, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brotman?
So I think the, the question before us on the moratorium is really only for the unpaid rent from March to August and how we want to handle that, is that right?
That's correct.
And if we go with the state, um, I guess there's a little bit longer time before tenants need to start beginning to repay because they don't have to start till March 1st.
Yeah, but then they have to?
But then they have to pay it all on March 1st, okay? If we stick with what we have, they are going to have to make a 25% payment for that unpaid rent at the end of next month.
Yes, but again, there won't be a basis for eviction, it'll just be a civil debt. But again, yes, there is a 25% ba, uh, payment due at the end of November.
And, and were you able to determine, because we talked about that yesterday, were you able to determine that even under the Glendale moratorium, that non-payment would not be grounds for eviction?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so regardless, so we don't need to do anything to, to introduce that concept into our moratorium, that's, that's automatic through, um, through AB 3088?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, okay, I guess, uh, I don't know, I mean, um, maybe, maybe we, we see if any people, uh, are calling in and have a view. It seems to me, um, subject to the, to the confusion that it causes, um, you know, we would probably be better off just sticking with what we have and letting that, you know, just letting that play out. But, um, I do worry about just all the confusion and, uh, and the education, and I think we're going to have to talk about, um, whether there's anything we can do to kind of help. I know we, we have these, um, we do refer people to neighborhood legal services sometimes and they, they provide some kind of tenant and, and landlord education, right? And sometimes even will provide legal advice and perhaps representation. I don't know if, if we maybe need to consider trying to do something a little bit more so that we, we make sure that our tenants and landlords, um, can figure this out and, and so that we're not just inundated with lots of requests and disputes and all kinds of, you know, confusion.
That's a, that's a good point and I, I would note that, you know, the least confusing of the options probably is to defer to the state only because everybody's in the same boat, um, but there, there are some downsides to that. We will certainly be working with, uh, rental rights, uh, our rental housing staff as well as, uh, Public Information Office to get information about whatever rule it is that the council decides to, to adopt. So if we stick with our rental repayment period, we, we will make sure to get that information out, uh, to landlords and tenants, uh, through our normal channels.
And, and when, when disputes do occur, and I'm sure there will be more than the normal number of disputes, um, do we feel like, and maybe this is a question, um, for the rental rights people, do we feel like we have enough resources, uh, in terms of, you know, uh, referrals into neighborhood legal services or anybody else that we use? Is that, is that, is that channel, um, effective? Is there enough? Do we need to do anything more? Uh, because I am concerned about, you know, lots and lots of these issues coming up and we can't necessarily handle them ourselves. And we, I think we, we don't, you know, we'll only go so far, right? Where some of these outside groups will, will actually provide a lot more advice, will write letters for the tenant or what have you, or the landlord. Um, I, I don't know, I just want to make sure we feel like we're in a position to handle the, the, the potential chaos that's coming down the pike.
Councilmember Brotman, uh, certainly, uh, understood, the point is understood. Um, I would, uh, maybe Mr. Lansham has, can add something, but I would, I would note that typically when new laws come into place, whether it was our own law that we adopted a couple of years ago or 1482, there seems to be sort of an initial rush to contact the city to get information and as we start to get off, a little bit more people, more people start to feel comfortable with what the rules are. Um, we, you know, as, as you alluded to, I think we, we're not in the position to provide legal advice, but certainly as it relates to our own codes, we do provide interpretation to anybody who asks, how does it work? How is it intended to work? Uh, and so we feel comfortable doing that.
Right, but if we get into a situation where somebody is claiming that, you know, our code isn't being, isn't being adhered to, um, and they, and they need, they actually need legal services and legal advice, we, I think we, we do have some groups we refer to.
Oh, yes.
We refer people to. Um, and, and I guess, and maybe this is a, a separate question we could take up later another time, is do we feel like we, is that working for us? Is there anything we need to consider to beef that up? Um, so I, maybe, maybe we'll set that aside, but that's something I'm, I want to keep an eye on to make sure that we have the right level of, um, referral capability for, for, you know, free or low-cost legal services.
We'll work with staff to make sure that the, the resources are, are, are there to refer people to the appropriate, to the appropriate authorities.
Okay, and if they're not, let us know and maybe we can look at, um, you know, doing something more formal with one of these groups so that we have resources dedicated. But if we don't need to, then that's good.
Okay.
I would like to see that we are going along with whatever states, state is offering, so not to have our own rules, uh, set of rules and laws different from the state. If we go along with what they are offering, I think will be much easier for the public also and for ourselves and everybody else. So you want to explain again what?
Sure, so our, when the council adopted the, the moratorium, a number of months ago, it, it put into place that rental repayment period for 12 months with quarterly payments. So that, that is, conflicts with the state rule, which is permissible, but the council is always free to repeal that rule or, or at, direct, the Director of Emergency Services to repeal that rule and we would do that and then bring it back to you at a later date. But, um, uh, certainly if that, if, if you want to follow the state, then, then the direction the council would need to provide, uh, us is to, uh, to draft an emergency order repealing the city's repayment schedule and default to the state's repayment schedule.
Is that acceptable to my colleagues? Because we better go along with the state, otherwise we will create such a confusion that every tenant should get an attorney to explain to them that what's, is going on. Then we're going to have our set of rules and then state rules and, I mean, we are causing problem for everybody, I think. Yes, Mr. Devine, Ms. Devine?
Thank you. It's just my, my thinking that our residents are familiar with our rules and regulations and, uh, you know, the mandates, all, everything that we've, um, that we've addressed and to then throw them into another, um, set of rules and regulations, uh, I think might be more confusing. That's just my feeling. And the second thing is, if we stick with our, um, regulation or our, um, what, what are we calling it? The repayment schedule, it gives them more time, uh, to repay. Uh, this way, you know, if we go by the state, they have to pay it all at once and that, that could be really, really difficult, uh, for some of our, our residents. So I would prefer to give them more time and, uh, stick with, uh, what we've adopted so far. That, that's just my opinion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Garcia, when they pay, go ahead with the state, they don't have, practically starts next ye, next year?
It'll start in March, but it'll, to the point that, uh, Councilmembers Brotman and Devine are making, it, it would, it would defer to March 1st, but then it would all be due, then at that point landlords can seek recovery on March 1st for all of the unpaid rent. And under our repayment schedule, it gets pushed out to August of next year. So, so you're giving them another five months, um, by sticking with our schedule.
All right. Better we stick on with our schedule.
Just one other thing. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brotman?
Um, yeah, it's, I mean, I haven't gotten any letters from anybody, the tenants union or anybody on this. Uh, I'm just curious whether there are any callers and we could hear whether, um?
Do they have callers?
Correct, uh, Mayor, we have two callers.
Okay, let's go to the callers then.
Okay. Joseph Moore, Joseph, you're live. Can you hear me? Joseph? Joseph, can you hear me? Joseph Moore? Joseph Moore? Joseph? Mayor, I can put him on hold and then come back to him in a few minutes.
Okay. Next one?
Karen Quack, Karen?
Hi, this is Karen Quack. I actually was not going to call in tonight, but if you actually want to hear my advice, I'm happy to supply it. Okay, regarding the rent freeze, uh, I've been checking the rents every month, they actually are finally going down significantly. So I actually have no opinion on whether you want to extend it or not, it doesn't seem necessary. Okay, about AB 3088, nobody is actually expecting that this repayment plan is going to be enforced. Absolutely everybody is expecting that the state legislature will return in January and give us a brand new law. So that by the time we are all in a comfortable place where we understand this law, they're going to give us a new one. And that's why the repayment plan under AB 38 is due all at once on March 1st because nobody is actually expecting to enforce that. Okay, so the biggest problem with this law, as you can see, law bankers are confused by it, housing lawyers with decades of experience are confused by it, and tenant activists who have been spending six weeks intensively studying this for hours are confused by it. So I actually have no idea how your average tenant or your average landlord is possibly wrapping their heads around this. Landlords are also confused by this. Um, so I actually recommend that you simplify things as much as possible to bring the Glendale law in line with the state law so that tenants and landlords have only one set of laws to follow. And so that when the state changes it again in January, we will again have only one set of laws to follow. And like, no matter what it is, like, please just make it simple and easy to understand for everybody as much as possible. Because the most confusing thing is that these, there's so many laws coming from different directions and they keep changing. You know, the, as much as we can minimize that, it's going to help tenants most. Okay, in terms of legal resources, you may always refer them to us. I spoke with two tenants just today, the Glendale Tenants Union. Also, the last time I called in last month, I mentioned a website called StayHouseLA, StayHouseLA.org. It was set up by the, by LA County and various community organizations specifically to help tenants all around the county, um, access help, whether it's legal help or to get in touch with organizations like us. Uh, so I would highly recommend that resource. I know a lot of people who start out by calling the city first and then found us. So if there's a way we can help you distribute this information, I would be happy to help you with that. Okay, that, that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Joseph is still on the phone, I'm going to try him one more time. Joseph Moore, Joseph? Joseph, can you hear me? Joseph, can you hear me? Joseph, you're live. Joseph?
Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore? I guess, when he comes on, okay, Mr. Garcia, City Attorney?
Uh, just on the speaker's comment, Ms. Quack, uh, there is a point there that the, you know, this bill, AB 38 was, um, so, a negotiation, was a compromise and, and was, there was discussion that at the end of January, there will be discussion to do another bill, either to extend it or whatever. So I don't know, I wouldn't necessarily say that this, you know, uh, will change, um, but there, there is, there's certainly a possibility that it could change, that the law could change once again, um, and either this moratorium, the statewide moratorium gets extended or amended or somehow. So that is, that is something for the council to consider, um, in, in weighing this issue.
That's why I was saying if you go along with the state, will be easier for everybody, for attorneys, for the public, that's my opinion, but apparently if somebody knows that this is going to stay, which I doubt, uh, state changes the rules and regulation frequently, and I don't think there's going to be any difference. So to go along with the state will be easier for everybody, but however, I will leave it to my colleagues to decide now.
Well, I think?
Yes, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, I think in light of, um, what Karen said, um, I would, I would be, uh, I would be okay going to, uh, defaulting to the state rules. I know that, you know, last session, there was the, the possibility of this bill, I forget now, was it SB 1410, the one that was, uh, had a mechanism for paying out landlords with future tax credits and then collecting from tenants over time. Um, I, I, I think, you know, there's a possibility that that could come back and maybe there's, you know, maybe there's some more fundamental fix that's going to come from Sacramento, I don't know. Um, but perhaps it does make sense for us to align with the state, see what happens when the legislature comes back, see if they come up with something that's, that's more fundamental, that's going to resolve the issue of tenants without just throwing the problem onto landlords, which is all we're really able to do now. So I, I guess I would, um, hearing what Karen said, I would, um, I'd, I'd agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would support, uh, doing it that way and aligning with, um, with?
So would you like to introduce the motion?
Well, let's, I want to hear from everybody else.
Okay.
Najarian or Kasakian, please?
Yeah, um, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, um, you know, this is a very, very tough, uh, decision to make because, you know, we came up with our, um, what we felt was a, a fair, or as fair of a, um, policy as we could think of, uh, you know, we were just? of a policy as we could think of, you know, we were just, you know, months into this and then that has dragged on. And we felt that our approach could still hold strong and be somewhat equitable, but it doesn't seem as though, given the other moving parts and the reality that we find ourselves in, that that is plausible. The state's actions make it very difficult for us to, to hold on to this without causing confusion, especially that even though we like to think that everything is, is static, things, so many things are moving, both in Sacramento, at the county and elsewhere. Ultimately, I would like to keep the spirit or at least the duration of, or the timeline that we had sent out, but, as well as the increments of repayment, but it doesn't look like that makes much sense if we're going to defer to the state on other issues as well. So albeit somewhat reluctantly, I, I would agree that it makes most sense to align ourselves with the state unless there's other compelling reasons as to why we shouldn't.
My worry is that eventually we're gonna go to, I mean, people, they're gonna go to court and to have two sets of rule to clear will be very difficult, even for the judges. They have to review our rules and laws to give the direction or adjudicate this, you know, the lawsuit. So I would feel more comfortable to go along with the state and I'm sure the state will come up with new changes to the law. So then it will be easier for everybody. That's all my two cents of it. Anyway, Mr. Najarian?
Yeah, the only thing I want, I mean, it's not a good situation whichever way you look at it. The only advantage to the city ordinance that we passed is at least these landlords who, who many have been going without rent since March, get a 25% payment at the end of November rather than waiting until March and get nothing, as Karen said. And as they know, that it's only, in the best case scenario, they're gonna have a small claims, small claims judgment, which is about as good as this little piece of paper I'm waving right now. So, I mean, I will go along with the, with my colleagues.
With the state, with, to go along with the state?
I'm, I, it looks like that's the, that's the way council is going. I'm not gonna kick and scream, just raise the difficulties for the landlords.
Do we have any other callers?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody wants to move the item?
Well, I guess I will move the items and somebody has to. I will, yeah, I will move that, I, I don't know, Mike, if you can.
Mr. Garcia, you wanna say?
Sure, it would be a motion to direct Director of Emergency Services to modify the rent eviction moratorium to default our repayment period to the state's repayment period.
Okay. Do you agree with that?
I couldn't.
Do I have second?
One of order.
Yes.
Have we appointed our new Director of Emergency Services? Isn't that take council action?
The city manager, or the interim city manager through your appointment becomes the Director of Emergency Services.
It's automatic?
Maybe he's the interim Director of Emergency Services, but he's the Director of Emergency Services.
I didn't know if we had to take an official step to appoint him. Thank you.
All right, do I have a second? Second?
If no one else is going to second it, I mean, guys, we're gonna have to do this. If we're all on the same page, fine, I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Epstein.
Wow.
Mayor, I'll get you on your.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, there was the item of the rent freeze. Just wanted to remind, if, you know, no action needs to be taken on it, it'll just expire at the end of this month. I just wanted to remind the council that it was one of the items on the agenda.
Okay, why we don't talk about that? We want to extend it for another month?
Can I, may I make a few comments or maybe ask a question first?
Yes, go ahead, Mr.
So just, just to be clear, so the current rent freeze only applies to buildings built prior to, is it 2005? Is it 15 year safe harbor?
1995.
1995, so it's governed by Costa-Hawkins, so it's any unit that was constructed before February 1, 1995. And then it also exempts single-family homes and, and individual-owned condominium units.
Proposition 21, Proposition 21 will bring it to, if it passes, will bring it to 2005.
Well, okay, if I could just continue. So AB, I think it's 1482, the, the, the recent rent control bill, right?
Correct.
That's limits rent increases of 5% on top of consumer price index. Isn't that, I thought I read that that was 2005 and prior.
So, correct. So for, it's a 15-year rolling period for that state rent control law. For local, any local rent control laws is still subject to Costa-Hawkins, which is 1995 or earlier. And as Mr., as the mayor notes, one of the items on the, on the ballot this year is to amend Costa-Hawkins to eliminate that, the 1995 restriction. And then local agencies would be able to consider other units and other years. But yeah, so for this purposes of this rent freeze, we'd have to, we'd have to follow Costa-Hawkins, which is any unit built on or before February 1, 1995.
Okay. And one comment I was gonna make, I, I was trying to do a little bit of research and I found something called the Apartment List, which gathers information on, on rents across the country. Anyway, they, they do have data and in fact, they even have, they have an interactive map and I found that they had Glendale on there and, and they were showing that rents, and I, you know, I don't know how accurate this is, and I don't know if they're talking about, you know, the high end of the market, the low end of the market, they don't distinguish, but rents are down, they say 7.5% in Glendale between March and, and, and I think it was August, end of August or whenever they, they did their, their cutoff. And I think, you know, and Karen Quack mentioned this as well, you know, I mean, rents if, 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 haven't been going down necessarily across, you know, all segments of the market, but they're, they're probably pretty flat. And so it does kind of lead me to think that maybe it, it's unnecessary to continue this rent freeze. I don't really see it having an effect and it might be better to, to just kind of go back to business as usual on, on, you know, on the issue of rent setting. So I, I would probably just go with letting it expire.
I would agree with you, Dan. Rents aren't going up, they're going down.
Same.
And, and I have, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
I was contacted by apartment association and, and I was told that the landlords really want the renters to stay. They don't want to lose them, they don't want to kick them out and so I think they're all gonna work together on this, this issue. I'd be inclined to agree.
But those who lost their job, what's the difference between now or this month or next month? What will change for them? That I don't understand. I mean, if they lost their job. I just want to say rent became lower, seven and a half percent, let's say. But the person doesn't have a job this month and next month will be in the same position. So how it's gonna help them?
Well, if, if I could, if I could comment on that.
Yes, please.
The point is just whether we are going to restrict rent increases. This is not addressing what, you know, what, what you're saying right now. So I think it's, I think it's probably time just to remove this restriction on, on, on rent increases and I, I don't expect that there's gonna be a rash of rent increases. There may be some localized ones. There are cases that, you know, I've heard about probably more in commercial than anywhere else of rents being cut to keep tenants in place. But I just think, I just think, you know, it's time.
Okay. All right. Is there any other come? No? So you want to move? Anybody wants to move?
Sounds like there's nothing to move, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
Just no action taken.
Right, no action on that.
Okay. All right. So what's next? Please.
Next would be 9, 9A, Community Development regarding Appeal of Design Review Board's Denial of DRB Case Number PDR 1709694-C. 910 Laird Drive, one motion to reverse the design review board's decision and approve the project. Two, motion to sustain the design review board's decision to deny the project.
Okay. Mr. Rollanian?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm gonna turn this over to Roger Kiesel, our senior planner with the Community Development Department, and I believe applicant and appellant and their teams are on the call as well.
All right.
Thank you, Roger.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The hearing before you tonight is an appeal of a design review board denial decision for a new single-family residence located at 910 Laird Drive. The appellant is also the applicant in the proposed project. Next slide, thanks. The proposed project is a new three-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. The house is 3,275 square feet. The lot on which the house is proposed is 81,296 square feet. The lot zoned R1R with a floor area ratio District 2. And then finally, the lot has frontage on both Laird Drive and East Chevy Chase. Next slide. This is the location map. The, the subject site is in orange. It's located on the south side of Chevy Chase. And if you notice Laird is a stub street, the frontage of the subject site is at the end of that stub. Next slide. This is an aerial view of the site from Google. The, the red outline is the approximate lot line of the subject site. Next slide, please. Then with regard to the, the project history, the board initially reviewed the proposed project or the proposed residence on the site in August of 2016. At that meeting, the board returned the project for redesign with conditions. The applicant then altered the project design and the, the board reviewed it again in December of 2017, where it again returned the project for redesign. Additional, additional changes were made and the board returned the project for redesign again in April 2018. And then the final time the board reviewed the project after alterations were, were made was in January of 2019. At that point, the board denied the project. The applicant appealed the project shortly thereafter, the denial decision, and this is the appeal before you this evening. Next slide. This slide, yes?
January 23, 2019. What was going on since then?
It's been under appeal. Correct.
2019?
Correct.
20, it should be 2020.
Oh, that's why I was, the last one should, should be 2020 then?
Yes, yes.
No, I believe the, the last time the board heard the project, the design review board heard the project was in 2019.
But from January 10?
Correct.
Like two weeks later or 13 days later, they listened to the project again in 13 days?
No. What happened was the board heard the project on January 10th of 2019. They denied it at that point. The applicant has 15 days to appeal that decision. He did so on January 23rd. So January 23rd, 2019 is the day the applicant appealed the DRB denial decision.
And then since then, nothing happened?
I'm sorry?
Since January 2019 until today?
Correct.
Is like 22 months?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, the site plan. Again, the, excuse me, the subject site is shown outline in red. A rough outline of the residence is currently, or as currently proposed is shown in green. And then finally, the, a rough outline of the driveway is shown in brown and that extends on both sides of the, of the, the proposed house. Originally driveways were proposed off of both Laird and Chevy Chase. The driveway off Chevy Chase is no longer proposed, which is to the right of the house. And I've just so, shown that for reference since there is discussion on grading and landscaping in that area, but the, the brown outline of the driveway to the right of the house is not proposed now.
The long one is no longer.
The long one, yeah, that's a better way of putting it. Our next slide. Real quickly, I'll go over the elevations. This is the west elevation of the proposed residence. This is the elevation that faces both, both streets as well as the nearby adjacent residences. Next slide. The east elevation is the rear of the house, which backs up to the upslope of the property. Next slide. The north elevation faces the lot's frontage on Chevy Chase Drive. And then, next slide, please. The south elevation of the residence is really the main elevation and what you will see as you approach the house from Laird and the, the onsite driveway. So I would say this is the main, the main elevation. Next slide. This is a bird's eye view from the south, sort of if you were looking from Laird and you were flying up in the sky. This is, this is what you'd see, this angle you'd see. Next slide. This is the perspective from the southwest. This is more taken at an eye level, so if you were standing on Laird or the driveway, this would be sort of what you would see. Next slide. And then this is the perspective taken from the south, taken roughly at eye level. Next slide. As I mentioned previously, the board heard this project four times. In the next three slides, I'm just gonna briefly go over the, the conditions of approval from the previous three, three DRB meetings for your reference. So in August of 2016, the conditions that the board placed on the project were the following, excuse me, revise the landscape to design to eliminate access and they're referring to the access off of Chevy Chase, the long driveway, and to control erosion from the former, or at the former driveway. The second revised site plan to locate the house closer to Laird. Originally, the house was really in the middle of the site and it has moved, proposed to be moved more toward Laird. The third condition, review environmental document to include amount of great, amount of grading to create the current driveway. And then finally revise landscape plans to provide under canopy species and screening for the neighbors. Next slide. The December 2017 conditions included lowering the elevation of the garage with direction, with further direction on the size of the garage in the house, relocating the lower, relocating the house lower on the slope to reduce its prominence, and then finally increasing the stepping of building volumes at each house level. Next slide. Next slide. The April two thousand eighteen conditions included revising the landscape plans at the driveway, reducing the mass and scale of the house, revising the site plan if necessary to satisfy those two ca- conditions. And then finally, uh, clarify or correct the roof plan. Next slide. Uh, the final hearing was in January of two thousand nineteen. Um, the board at that time denied the project with five findings. Uh, those findings included, um, that the site conditions and grading, uh, have not been addressed in the, in the most present proposal. Uh, the house was placed too high on the site. The third, the house size should be reduced further. Uh, the design and detailing of the house is inconsistent. And then the fi- uh, the final finding for denial was, uh, the drawings don't can, contain enough information about grading and landscaping treatment, um, of the previously graded area. And that was again referring to the Chevy Chase drive, um, driveway. Next slide. Uh, as I mentioned before, the, the applicant appealed the case on January twenty-third of two thousand nineteen and cited, um, five items as their basis of appeal. And these items were that, uh, the DRB did not follow the intent of the comprehensive design guidelines, one of which is to provide predictability. Uh, the second, the DRB exceeded their authority by not respecting the intent of the comprehensive design guidelines and not considering specific design modifications responding to the conditions in their return for redesign decisions. The third was the DRB feel, uh, failed to consider how conditions were met and how the project satisfied the comprehensive design guidelines. Next slide. Uh, the DRB refused to hear certain facts before making their decisions. Uh, the appellant's applicant contends that the exhibits and presentations shown to the board on, uh, at the January two thousand nineteen meeting, um, were sufficient to make, uh, an affirmative decision on the project, to approve the project as opposed to deny the project. And then finally, the, uh, applicant, uh, contends that new evidence of fact should change, uh, the der- the determination of the project. Next slide. Um, I'll, I'll go over with you the, um, basis of appeal and how, um, staff's evaluation of that. So, with regard to the first basis of appeal, uh, one of the intents of the comprehensive design guidelines is to provide predict, predictability to the, um, to the property owner, to developers, and to residents. Uh, staff believes that the applicant did work in good faith to meeting the conditions of each of the first three DRB, um, design review board meetings. Um, as one example, um, the applicant provided grading plans and information, uh, showing the amount of, uh, illegal grading and proposed cut and fill. Um, staff presented information from the public works department at the time, uh, stating that they were satisfied with this restoration work. And again, this is, um, the, the illegal grading, um, the landscaping and the cut and fill to restore it are all, um, uh, referencing the long driveway which, uh, ends at Chevy Chase, which is no longer, um, proposed as a means to enter the site. So additionally, trees were also proposed on the Chevy Chase driveway, uh, location to, um, to block access to the driveway. And, uh, just further reinforce that it was not to provide access to the site. The applicant believed after the second meeting, so that would be the, um, that believe, I believe would be the December two thousand seventeen meeting, um, that the questions that the board had regarding the illegal driveway grading were resolved because there were no further conditions during subsequent DRB meetings. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is a fill diagram at the driveway, so this is a brief explanation of, um, part of the restoration work that is, is proposed for the illegal grading in that area. And the fill is shown in, um, uh, kind of a tan color. So, kind of a long, thin, um, area right by, uh, right by East Chevy Chase. Next slide. These are the landscape plans, and I apologize, I just realized, um, the two slides are oriented differently. So Chevy Chase is at the bottom of your screen and the, the, uh, the initially proposed driveway, um, is, is heavily landscaped to the bottom left of your screen. Um, so you can see the proposed, uh, additional, uh, the oak trees as well as, uh, the other sort of undercover landscaping that's proposed in the driveway or at the, at the driveway to, uh, prevent access.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
So this, what we are looking at, this is proposed, right? Not the?
Correct.
At this time, there is the driveway?
Correct. It is proposed. There, at one point, um, this project has gone on for seven, eight years. At one point, there was a driveway that was proposed from East Chevy Chase.
Right.
That is no longer proposed. That driveway is no longer proposed.
Nice.
But the board was concerned that, um, that the homeowner, that other people would access it from that point. And so to dissuade them from doing that, um, they required, uh, additional oak trees to be planted, additional, um, uh, uh, other plants that, um, are, are good in that kind of environment, under oak trees, uh, to be planted in that area to prevent access, to dissuade access to the site from that.
Chevy Chase.
Chevy Chase, yeah.
Thank you.
Next slide. Uh, regarding the next two bases of appeal, um, as I've mentioned before, uh, the proposed residence was heard by the board a total of four times. Um, initially, the residence was, uh, approximately, uh, forty-two-hundred square feet with a three-car garage and a guest house. Um, at each subsequent DRB meeting, the proposed residence, uh, was reduced in size from initially, uh, about thirty-eight-hundred square feet with a two-car garage to the final proposal, the January two thousand nineteen proposal, where the house, uh, was thirty-two-hundred-seventy-five square feet, uh, and a two-car garage as well. Massing reductions were incrementally made through the reductions in the house size, um, along with reconfiguring and re-stepping, um, or stepping of the house. Relocation of the house to roughly its present location, which all, um, was a previous slide on the site plan. Uh, and then also relocating the house, um, uh, toward Laird and with it, and the garage being at a lower elevation. So the gr- so the house migrated from sort of the center of the site to an area closer to Laird, to an area closer to Laird that was lower in elevation, basically. Also, in the final, uh, seminal, additional oak trees were proposed, uh, at the previously graded driveway to prevent access. Again, um, this, this, uh, is another means by which, um, s- staff is concurring with the, with the applicant on their basis of appeal. Uh, so next slide, please. This is a, just a, a brief, uh, summary of a, a table showing the size, uh, of the proposed residence. So, um, the, the, um, the subject side is just over eighteen, or I'm sorry, eighty-one thousand square feet, um, which would allow a maximum size house of just over ten thousand square feet. So, the house, all other things be, or the lot, all other things be equal, would allow a ten thousand square foot house. Initially, uh, six, seven years ago, um, the project was, uh, proposed to be forty-six-hundred square feet. And that included the main house and a garage, or I'm sorry, a main house and a guest house. Uh, the first time I went to the board, it dropped to thirty-seven-hundred-forty square feet. Um, the second time, dropping again to thirty-five-fifteen, the, the April two thousand eighteen meeting to thirty-four-ninety-six. And then finally, till the last meeting, uh, in January of two thousand nineteen, thirty-two-seventy-five square feet. Uh, next slide. This is a comparison of, um, masses of the proposed residence from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Um, again, this is what I would consider the, 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 um, well, it's, it's the north elevation. It faces, um, it faces both streets and, uh, the adjacent neighbors. So, the top, uh, elevation shows the, uh, two thousand seventeen proposed residence. The middle elevation is the two thousand eighteen proposed residence, and then two thousand nineteen, uh, is at the bottom. Uh, next slide. And this, uh, slide simply shows the stepping of the house, um, which is, it's a section and, uh, the proposed residence is on the left-hand side and there are trees in the middle. And then for reference, um, the house on Chevy Chase with a little pool is at the right-hand side, and then Chevy Chase, which is not shown, would be further right. Next slide. Uh, the next basis of appeal was that the DRB refused to hear certain facts before making a decision. Um, as I mentioned, grading and, and landscape plans were provided at the previous three DRB meetings. Um, because there were no conditions regarding the illegal driveway grading and public's work, public works was satisfied with the work, uh, the applicant understood that the issue had been resolved. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you. The next slide is, um, that the applicant, the applicant believed that the exhibits and the pres- presentations were sufficient for the board to, uh, approve the project. I can, I can go back to the, uh, elevations of the house, but, um, the proposed elevation is a Spanish-style residence. That is appropriate for the neighborhood and the, the, um, all the detailing is also appropriate for that style. So the stucco walls, uh, the two-piece barrel tile, the wood-clad windows, um, those are all appropriate to that style residence. Uh, it was mentioned, uh, that, um, there were some inconsistencies in the window design, um, that has been, um, rectified, uh, in the plans that are before you this evening. Next slide. Uh, staff has received some correspondence from several, uh, area residents expressing, uh, concern regarding the project. Uh, these concerns included privacy, the scale of the residence, driveway slope, illegal grading, uh, and then drainage and, and flooding issues. Uh, with regard to privacy, privacy, uh, per our code is judged, um, by the view from a common gathering room of the residence or balcony over twenty-five square feet, uh, into adjacent buildings or outdoor areas. So, in, in the current, uh, application, you know, given the distance between the proposed, uh, between the proposed residence and the adjoining properties, uh, given the intervening topography between the proposed house and the adjoining properties, and to a certain extent, given the extent of the trees and other foliage, um, staff doesn't believe that, uh, privacy is really, um, jeopardized in the, in the present case. Um, the scale of the residence has been addressed previously in the presentation. Uh, the size of the house has been reduced to just under, uh, thirty-three-hundred square feet, uh, which is well within the permitted square footage, uh, given this, given the size of the lot. It is, it is, uh, larger than the neighborhood average. The house steps with the terrain of the lot, uh, which is in compliance with the hillside design guidelines and is effective in reducing the mass. Talking about driveway slope, the slope standards for driveways are contained in the city zoning code. Uh, driveway slope for the proposed project will be double-checked, um, at the plan check stage of the project, uh, to ensure compliance with the zoning code standards. So, um, if the project is approved tonight, at a certain point, the applicant will submit for plan check and, um, the various departments will, will check what they're responsible for, uh, and one of those things is driveway slope. Uh, regarding the, uh, grading, grading without proper, without proper approvals, um, has occurred on the site. Uh, with regard to the grading, uh, sort of at the Chevy Chase area where the driveway sort of was proposed, um, public works is, is satisfied with the proposed, uh, restoration efforts of that driveway, um, through the additional fill, um, through the landscaping. And illegal grading, it, um, isn't, isn't really under the approv- purview of, um, DRB at this point. Uh, it's more a, a code compliance issue. Almost done. Rainwater, um, talking about drainage and flooding, rainwater flows, uh, through the subject site, uh, as well as adjacent properties due to the topography of the surrounding area. Drainage issues are typically not addressed by or under the purview of the design review board. Instead, drainage is really reviewed again at the plan check stage, this, the plan check process. So, um, I know that, um, there are some concerns in the neighborhood that, um, part of the proposed development and specifically, um, a proposed wall adjacent to the driveway may impact adversely, um, drainage in the area. Um, that, the improvements and the drainage in the area will be, uh, checked at the plan check stage.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Illegal grading, it says on that page, I don't know, whatever the page number is, I can't read, but, uh, when we say illegal grading is just grading on the driveway or somewhere else?
Um, there was, there was grading, uh, in the area of East Chevy Chase.
No, but just for that driveway?
Just for the, for the driveway.
There is no other illegal grading other than?
Well, there was, there was some grading, um, um, sort of, it becomes an extension of the Laird Drive stub that goes up to the, to where the site is going to be developed. It appears there was some grading there as well. Yes.
But when that happened?
To be honest with you, I, I'm not sure. Um, the, I, I believe, um, the applicant may be able to shed some light on that and...
I'm just wondering if it was previously done, long time ago, somebody did grading and has nothing to do with this owner of the property, and that's what I'm trying to...
Right. And, um, th- that's been difficult to ascertain.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Next.
So, my next slide, and I think my final slide is, um, that staff is recommending that the city council reverse the design review board's, uh, denial decision and approve the project based on the reduced, um, size of the house and garage from when the project was initially conceived, um, based on the relocation of the house, uh, lower on the site and closer to Laird, um, based on the relocation of the garage at the driveway cut, which is something I didn't go over. If there was a, uh, if you had a question on that, we can, we can go back. And then finally, um, based on the restoration... And then finally, um, based on the restoration, uh, and landscaping of the, uh, existing dr, Chevy Chase driveway. So that concludes my, um, presentation. If you have any questions?
Okay, my colleagues, if they have any questions, otherwise I want to go to the callers and see what they have to say. Is there any question from our, from our staff?
May, may I?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Ask one question, may? Uh, Mr., uh, Roger, when you mentioned the, uh, the reason the road, uh, to Chevy Chase, uh, was landscaped like it was, you said to keep cars from driving up that way, wasn't it also because they had graded a vertical cut in the slope, uh, which could have caused, um, flooding or mudslides in that area? So they're planting all of these, uh, what is it, five oak trees? And, um, and, uh, other landscaping to prevent erosion and landslide?
Right, right, it was, uh, you're correct. It was, um, to prohibit driving in that area as well as for erosion control because, um, it had been graded and landscaping, um, helps to, helps to prevent that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other question before I go to the callers?
Um, I, I have a question.
Mr. Brockman?
Um, I, I'm puzzled as to why we can't ascertain, um, who and when this, you know, who, who, um, did this illegal, uh, grading and when that occurred? Um, I've seen some pictures that show, and I think we've all received these pictures, that show, uh, the, the entrance from Laird being untouched, um, y- you know, in late twenty-eleven, and then significantly changed, uh, after, uh, I believe the owner purchased this property in early twenty-twelve. So, we've all seen these pictures. I don't understand how, uh, there can be confusion about it, or, or is there something I'm missing?
Uh, I was, I was more referring to the grading, uh, along East Chevy Chase, the driveway there.
Okay, but there was, there's, there was substantial legal grading off of Laird, correct?
Uh, yes, there is grading.
And there were no permits pulled for it?
No.
Um, and it was done, I mean, apparently it was done in, uh, twenty-twelve, in early twenty-twelve, at least it started then. When did the, when did the owner, uh, purchase this property?
You know, that's something you should probably ask the owner, I, I'm not sure.
Okay. I mean, I'm seeing the pictures, so I don't, I don't know. I see a head shaking, um, but I don't know, um, unless somebody can explain to me why I'm seeing a picture from October twenty-eleven with, um, the area at the top of Laird entering into the, uh, into the property being, you know, in pristine condition, and then I'm seeing a picture in, um, let's see, what it is?
Twenty-fourteen.
Oh, okay, in twenty-fourteen, I thought there was an earlier one, though. But anyway, oh yeah, you're right, you're right, Councilmember Devine, in March twenty-fourteen shows significant alteration. So, I don't see how it can't have occurred under the current, uh, owner. I don't know if he did it or who did it, but it seems like it was in that time period, no?
And, uh, if, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
I, I have those, staff has those photos, and we'll be looking at those later.
Oh, okay. That's good, because I'd, I'd like to get that cleared up. That's very troubling to me personally, um, because I, you know, if something happens and it's not permitted, we shouldn't just say that's okay and move on. I think we really, we really need to, to go back and rectify that fully.
Is there any other quest, uh, question, colleagues, uh, council members, or I go to the callers?
Ms., Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Garcia?
It's appropriate to open the hearing, and I know that the applicant or appellant and the team have a presentation to make, and it's appropriate to allow the appellant to...
Okay.
Uh, go first. I know that the, the appellant's representative, Mr. Premian, is on, on WebEx as well as the owner and maybe the architect. So, uh, generally in these circumstances, it's a, it's a good idea to give them a certain amount of time to make their, their presentation, um, and then allow the other speakers who want to speak a set amount of time, depending on your discretion.
But now, I go to the owner?
I would go, I would go, is, is, Mr. Prem is on, uh, is on, so it's appropriate to ask her how much time she and her team need.
Okay.
Typically, ten to fifteen minutes is, is granted for, for the appellant.
Okay.
And then go from there.
I, I need to know, so how many callers do we have?
Mayor, we have four callers right now.
Okay, all right. Uh, okay, I start with the applicant. How, how much time?
Yes? Uh, before we open the hearing, um, a question for Mr. Garcia. You said something to us about, um, disclosing any ex parte communications or visits. Should we do that now?
Uh, thank you for that, uh, reminder, Councilmember Brockman, yes. So if any of the council members had conversations with, uh, an appellant, a neighbor, or, or made a site visit, uh, prior to this hearing, it's appropriate to disclose that, just disclose the general nature of it, uh, before we commence with the rest of the proceeding.
Okay.
Okay, so I would say, um, I visited the site on Sunday. I didn't speak to anybody, but I did just look around. Uh, and, um, I did speak to, uh, Graham Whiffler of the Homeowners Association, who went through those photos with me. So those were my two communications.
And Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Well, I was, uh, yes, I have to disclose as well. I was contacted by a member of the design review board, Art Simonian, and asked if I would like to discuss the case with him. Um, I declined and did not talk to him about the case. I visited the site and I spoke to the adjacent neighbors, and, um, they expressed their concerns to me.
Okay, Mr. Najarian?
I, I refused any, uh, contact with anyone on either side. However, I did receive binders from the Gindro family as well as a, something that was on my office desk. It's a compilation of photos and emails back and forth, generally opposing, from what I could get, opposing the project.
Okay, Mr. Kusakia?
Uh, generally the same as, uh, Councilmember Najarian. A lot of emails on this, um, most of them from individuals opposing it. Um, I was contacted by Mr. Simonian as well, but we did not have, uh, discussion related to this. And, and I also know Ms. Ya Premian, uh, but we haven't discussed this.
Okay. And nobody called me, and then I didn't speak to anybody, and nobody contacted me. So, and I didn't go to look at the property, I just looked at the brief, which was provided to me by our, uh, staff. So, I don't know if anybody tried to reach me, but I, I'm unaware at least. Anyway, now, uh, so we go to the property owner now?
I believe the property owner's representative, uh, Mr. Premian, is on WebEx. If we could just unmute her so she can go ahead and make her presentation.
Uh, okay. Ms. Ya Premian, right?
Mr. Mayor Agadon, the City of Glendale, the council and staff. I'm Shelly Gipman, Gipman Consulting. I was retained by Mr. Monroe, who represented this evening. Mr. Monroe and his architect, Elizabeth Peron, will be speaking, uh, right after me. I forwarded my presentation notes to you all, so that you have a copy of it, just in case I run out of time. Uh, my client purchased the property at nine-ten Ridge Drive, twenty-twelve.
Mr. Premian, can I, can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you? Can, um, how much time for the, for the presentation?
I will stop him when I see they, they go too long.
Uh, okay.
Twenty minutes, maybe.
Okay.
How many? I'm sorry.
Twenty minutes altogether with others, if you have...
So that's twenty for the team?
Yes.
Right, very good.
And if you pass few minutes still, I let you continue.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, prior to purch, purchasing the property, Mr. Monroe had done his due diligence by checking with the city's planning department staff.
Ms. Ya Premian, Ms. Ya Premian, talk to the microphone, straight to the mic, microphone, if it's possible.
Um, you cannot hear me?
I can hear you, but when you move your head around, then it will be harder. So try to speak to the microphone. And bring the microphone as close as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll try, Mr. Mayor, sorry. Um, again, uh, prior to purchasing the property, he had done his due diligence by checking with the planning department staff, Jeff Hamilton, and the city arborist, Anne Marie Sheets. They did not express any particular issues at the time. He filed for a conditional use permit, CUP, in twenty-thirteen, as required for slopes exceeding fifty percent. The CUP was approved by the hearing officer for the development of a single-family house on the property. Afterwards, the zoning code was amended, and the CUP requirement was eliminated from the approval process. I wanted to focus on, uh, the design review process. Design review board approval is the only discretionary application required for this application. This project was scheduled six times in front of the design review board, beginning in twenty-sixteen until twenty-nineteen January. The house size, as Roger explained, uh, was reduced throughout the time. Uh, at every meeting, uh, staff recommendation was to include the project with conditions. The board, however, decided to either return for redesign, uh, on few of the meetings. There was one particular meeting where there was, uh, lack of a forum, so the meeting was continued. Uh, another meeting, uh, which was on December thirteenth, the board continued the case to January tenth, twenty-nineteen. Uh, overall, they had six meetings scheduled for this project. The client filed the appeal on the January tenth, twenty-nineteen DRB decision. The house size, three thousand two hundred seventy-five square foot with two-car garage. DRB chronology shows this project was unnecessarily delayed by DRB due to continuance, lack of a forum, or having less than five members on the board in all the meetings with inconsistent recommendations. So for some reason, the board did not function well as a group throughout those years. The DRB contour expressed their dissatisfaction with the project design after repeatedly being modified by the project architect to satisfy each board member. Staff continually supported the project with conditions. We do feel that the DRB delays were unfair and bad. Proposed project, just like any other project, has to comply with the DRB guidelines and the zoning code. Staff always reviewed the project before scheduling the case for DRB to ensure that the proposed project complies with the zoning code and the DRB guidelines. Again, staff always supported the project with accordance with its current provisions, and I fully concur with their reviews as a former, um, city of Glendale planning department staff. There are three particular code sections that I would like to, uh, refer to you all. One is thirty-point forty-seven-point zero-one-zero, which highlights intent and the purpose of design review board. Um, and this is very critical in how the board has to review projects, as well as how staff has to review projects, and the fact that this case is in front of you as an appeal, you only need to make sure you followed that intent and purpose. Second section, code section, which is thirty-point forty-seven-point zero-four-seven, which highlights the standards of the review authority. Again, what are the aspects of the design review board review? What are the things they have to follow? The third aspect is the residential district additional ROS and R1R development standard, which is thirty-point eleven-point zero-four-zero, which directly refers to hillside development review policy. And I, I highlighted all of those for you in my presentation notes. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go on each item. Finally, proposed house design and compatibility. The last version of the proposed house is three thousand two hundred seventy-five square feet, two-car garage on a eighty-one thousand two hundred ninety-six square foot lot. This is not a large house under current lifestyle standards, especially on a lot that is nearly two acres. You will hear from the project architect and how the, or, on how the project met all of the hillside design guidelines and design compatibility tests, including DRB comments. The project complies with all of the zoning code provisions. CUP or variance is not required for this project. The only requirement is, again, design review, uh, even under the old CUP requirements, both the city staff and the hearing officer made the appropriate findings to approve a single-family house construction of this property. Even though CUP is not required under current code, it did require back in twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, and the hearing officer drafted findings to show that the proposed project complied with all of the findings for a four thousand one hundred forty-three square foot house, which means compliance with the hillside development guidelines under the CUP review. They even had a mitigated negative declaration under California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA review. The project approval at the time had the following findings, and I listed them. But the last one, which is very criti, critical to this design review, uh, and the, the appeal for your consideration, it indicates that additionally, hillside development review was assisted with chapter thirty-point eleven-point zero-four-zero A. Both the comprehensive design guidelines and the landscape design guidelines for visual development, hillside development have been complied with. Furthermore, the visual impact of the proposed single-family house on surrounding property will be relatively minor. People driving up and down on Chevy Chase Drive will not see the house, given the elevated location above the street and the existing oak trees that will screen the house. The house is not located within a reach line either. This is a very important point when, uh, the city reviews, uh, hillside development. Therefore, no visual impact. So that was a particular finding, which was made by the hearing officer back in twenty-thirteen. I just wanted to bring that up to show that the city staff, the hearing officer, going back to twenty-thirteen, looked at this project and made the appropriate findings that it complied with the zoning code and the hillside design guidelines. Just to conclude, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would like to note that Mr. Monroe did everything by the book. Before he purchased the property, he first checked with the city, the city planning department, and the city arborist. He filed for CUP as required at the time. He then filed for DRB. He is not proposing to build a mansion. This is a three thousand two hundred seventy-five square foot house with a two-car garage on a two-acre lot. It's less than what was approved by the CUP back in twenty-thirteen, um, eight hundred sixty-eight square feet less. Um, he complied with both staff and DRB zoning code requirements, and made design modifications to satisfy each member of DRB. Planning staff always supported the changes, and the architect proposed and made recommendations to approve with conditions. However, DRB was never consistent with their collective recommendations, and I don't want to, I don't want to mention which board member, um, had specific conditions, but as a collective board, they were never consistent with their recommendation, which resulted in months and years of delays. Mr. Monroe, as a Glendale resident and taxpayer, did not deserve to go through this torturous process in order to build a single-family house. The DRB process never intended to establish or to create perfect designs or to make every house design look the same. And that comes from an experience that I had with the city of Glendale. And that comes from an experience that I had with the city of Glendale as a planner. The project meets all of the zoning code provisions related to single-family house construction and the design guidelines for single-family homes. My client has gathered many signatures which I submitted to Roger, including four additional letters for your file and record. I would like to end by saying, I would like to thank Roger Kinsel for working with me on this appeal case. Thank you, city council members, for reviewing DRB case number PBR 1709694-C, appeal case, and hope that you unanimously vote for the first motion in the staff report which reverses the DRB denial decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Pierre.
I'd like to have the project architect continue the presentation.
What's the name of the architect?
May I ask a question of Ms. Pierre?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
I'm sorry, you did not answer the question as to who, when the grading was done without a permit.
Councilmember Devine, I think the project architect was involved with this project earlier than I was, so I would like her to answer.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
And the property owner is also present, so you can answer him as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. The architect, what's the name of the architect, please?
Elizabeth Heron.
Heron, Heron.
Hello.
Ms. Ms. Heron?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Detective Dodgers. So, okay, I inherited this project from two other architects. There's a CUP before I started, and then a second, another case before the DRB, which I was not, was not my case. I benefited from information from the DRB and what the concerns were from the DRB and the neighborhood from previous iterations of the project. But first, because it seems to be so prevalent, and our opposition, who owns the house at twenty-five-hundred Chevy Chase, has been so effective at cherry-picking photos and making it look as though my client is a bad actor. I'd like to address that very clearly for you to clear the record. My client showed me photo, I didn't come onto the case until after 2016. So, no, I was not present from the beginning. I'm the third architect. But what I do have is information and photos that were shown to be mine, my client, which are a part of the overall package, but they're on page like three hundred and twelve or something. So I don't blame you for not seeing them. They were photos that were put together by the listing agent of the site. And I wish I were there, and this is a really bad photo. This is a photo that's looking up from Chevy Chase. But the driveway cut was present from Lair Drive, and it looped all the way to Chevy Chase. At the time when my client purchased the property, he, I think, entered into escrow at the end of 2011, and he closed escrow in 2012. What he did do was maintain the site, and he was cited sometimes for, like, there were sandbags on the site, as you can see. These real estate photos are really bad. But there are sand, there were sandbags on the site. And if you look carefully at the site that was put together by our neighbor at twenty-five-hundred Chevy Chase through the Chevy Chase Homeowners Association, it shows sandbags on the site. So when my client purchased the property, there was a driveway cut. My client did maintain the cut. He did refresh the sandbags, and you see a photo that's got fresh sandbags on it, and it's got like a little landscape strip. If you look carefully at the photos, and you look carefully at the photo before he purchased it and after he purchased it, you'll see that the grading has not affected. There was a slope of approximately twenty percent of the driveway going up to where we are proposing a driveway in that same area. We are lowering the slope slightly to be within the parameters of code. But that driveway cut was present at the time my client purchased the property. He will speak to that. I was not there. I just have seen photos of the site before he purchased the property. So I'm going to get on with my presentation now. And mostly what I want to talk to is who I am as an architect. I was brought in as an architect that likes to try to build consensus with the neighbors. Obviously, that's not worked out so well on this project. And also tries, is, I'm a hillside architect, that's what I do. I've done that for thirty-five years. I have a lot of experience, and I'm also an environmentalist. My architecture firm is Elizabeth Heron Eco Texture, because I look at, trying to do zero footprint, net zero houses. And I look at every lot, especially an upslope lot, because you tend to have, to balance the grading with the visibility of the site. So if you cut into the hill more, then it's more grading. But if you don't, then, you know, you have a highly massive house. So we worked so hard, staff, you know, Roger's predecessor, other staff members, Jay Platt and his, you know, we've had many, many, many hours really trying to tailor this house to this very special hillside where it's being sited. There's also an oak woodland that's so gorgeous. And so we were very careful in our attempts to minimize the profile of this house to not alter or affect those trees, which are just a tremendous resource. And so it was like stepping lightly and trying very hard to do a job to address the environment of which this house will be placed. We met with the neighborhood, and especially the neighbor at twenty-four-eighty, no less than ten times on the site, attempting to see, okay, what would you like to see here? What would make this house have less of an impact on you? How would you, how should we tailor this project? And the really hard thing for me to accept is that after making such an effort to build consensus in the community, to never having those efforts acknowledged and to always having this firestorm of opposition every time I presented the project regardless. And it was sort of whack-a-mole. But let me go through the major things that I was asked to do, and I very, tried very hard to do those things. The main thing when I inherited the project after the August eleventh, two thousand sixteen hearing by my predecessor, was to relocate the house closer to Lair. They did not want the house to be visible from the hillsides around, and it is quite invisible where we placed it, because it's completely sheltered by trees. In my package, I submitted a couple of photos as you drive by on Chevy Chase. And you look at the rather large house in front of us, which is our opponent, and you don't see the site at all. You can't see it, even with the flags, the poles up. You cannot see it from Chevy Chase and Lair accesses two driveways. It's just a stub street, as was mentioned previously. So that was a big thing. And then another thing was access from Chevy, from the Chevy Chase side. There was a cut that was done, again, before my client acquired the property, that would, would not be good for the house that was sitting right there in that vicinity. And so from the very beginning, every effort was made to figure out how to fix that cut that was placed there and what to do. You couldn't, you can't put too much of a bench fill in there, because it would cause erosion problems. So most of the, the design work was done with vegetation and planting to try to resolve an existing cut and try to take care of a problem that we inherited. So the other concern had to do with that loop driveway. People didn't want people kind of being able to go from Lair to Chevy Chase. So we blocked it with five mature oak trees, as also was a condition of approval from one of our later hearings. We lowered the house as far as possible, and a precise elevation was part of a condition of approval of the, my first hearing, which was December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. And so each time I was given a condition, I very carefully assessed the condition and supplied the thing that was requested. In the next hearing, they started talking about wanting to reduce the mass and the size of the house further. In the first two hearings, that was not brought up. So I went ahead and carved the house way down. And I also tried to find a way to step it up the hill so that it, the perceived mass was much less. So for the very last hearing and how I responded to that, what I did at that hearing was I placed the garage in front of the house to block the driveway, the concern about that loop driveway, so that I actually placed the garage in that driveway, so you can't drive through there. And then with the five protected oak trees that were also placed in that driveway, that driveway will not be used for access, and that was very carefully considered. So since the last hearing where we were denied, I want to focus on what I've done to resolve the remaining issues from that last hearing. And the primary issues brought up in that denial were grading, driveway, landscape. And then they said in that hearing that the house was in the right site on the lot, but they were saying that I needed to lower the house more. So what I did, and the reason I had the garage where I had it was in response to the neighbors at twenty-four-eighty, the ones I had like eight meetings with, to try to push the driveway as, the garage and the house as far away from them as possible. But it did make the house a little, the garage a little higher. So I thought, okay, DRB, I will respond to that. And I pushed the garage down the site just to kind of lower the profile of the project as absolutely low as I could, so it was invisible. So the overriding, in summary, every time we were given a consideration or a condition, we worked very hard to resolve it.
Thank you.
We spent many, many, many hours meeting with neighbors, trying to build consensus. And the problem is that the neighbor in front of us just doesn't want any house. So I began to feel like it was kind of not ever going to happen. But I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
And I think that my overriding, the statement I want to say, just to summarize, is that this is a good house. This is a house that's responded to all the comments and conditions and effort that staff and myself and my client have put in to make it as good a house as possible and to respond to all of the neighbors' concerns. So I hope that you will reverse the DRB denial. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Heron. Is there anybody else on the property owner's?
The property owner is online.
Oh, property owner is online?
The property owner, yeah.
Okay, let's listen to him.
What is the property's, a property owner's name?
Raymond Monroe.
You can say.
Yes, my name, Mr. Mayor, member of city council. My name is Raymond Monroe. I am the property owner of nine-ten Lair Drive. I have been a Glendale resident for twelve years. I moved to Glendale in two thousand nine and lived at seven-twenty-four Prospect Drive. Then in two thousand eleven, the opportunity came to buy this vacant property so that I can build my dream house for my family. We wanted a house right across, we rented a house right across this property, twenty-five-one East Chevy Chase Drive, so that we can closely manage the construction. The new, the, now the, currently, I live at thirty-one sixty-nine Kirkham Drive. Before closing escrow, we went to the city and met with Jeff Hamilton from, from planning to find out if the lot was buildable and what the zoning rules were at the time. And we asked also if there was any, any problem with the property, because there was some, apparently some grading that was done and that shows on the real estate sign. And I, in fact, I brought that, those pictures, and that was showed at several of the meetings. Nobody pays attention to me at that time, because we have a man right across in front of the property that wanted to buy the property also. Apparently, I paid more money for it. And then for that reason, he went to the real estate company and tried to sue them, saying they did, they did, you know, favor to me. So, but anyway, let me continue on. Let me not get off my, you know, my speech here, but, you know, I find that, you know, insulting to me that I've been accused of doing grading when I didn't. Okay, I'll continue on. So anyway, there was no violation of the property, they told me. So I went ahead and I closed the escrow in two thousand and twelve. So we have done everything that DRB recommended. I am not building a mansion. It is an average-sized house for my family with a two-car garage on a large, two, on a larger two-acre lot. This process has cost me over six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars so far, and we have not even begun to construction. I am requesting that this city council approve my dream house so that I can start construction soon. I have been in this process for nine years since I bought the property. Before I say thank you, I would like to say this person that incited all the other neighbors to go against the property, is a man that wanted to buy the property. He even tell me, in front of my daughter and my wife, many times we go to the land, that if we didn't sell him a portion of the land, he would go against the property. And that's exactly what's been going on. Thank you very much for your time, and please approve my projects.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Do we have anybody else wants to talk on behalf of the property owner? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Can I, can I have like two minutes of your time?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So, and members of the city council. My name is Lizette Monroe, daughter of Raymond Monroe, property owner of nine-ten Lair Drive. Have any of you ever thought that something was unattainable or unrealistic? Because that's exactly how the situation has made me feel. I remember the day my dad bought a piece of land, as if it were yesterday, you know? From the very first moment he saw it, he knew that he would build a house there someday, and it would be the place my parents and I would get to call home. I was about ten years old, and I was so excited that we would finally have our dream house. But unfortunately, that dream hasn't come true yet. I stand before you all today. Eight long years have gone by, and I'm in my first year of college now. I'm eighteen years old and still no dream house. It's crazy to think that neighbors' lies and comments could do so much damage, you know? My dad has gone, has done nothing but tries to build his family a home. He has fought for this. Numerous people have told him to give up and that it wouldn't be possible. And I, myself, am one of those individuals. But my dad has faith and won't ever give up on this. My dad has so many traits that I look up to him for, and his persistency and dedication are undoubtedly one of them. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Please be fair, take the right decision, and approve this project and give us a place to call. Thank you.
Ms. Monroe, thank you. Okay, now, from whom we're going to listen to now? Callers?
All the other speakers who want to speak on the item, Mr. Mayor.
On the call?
On the call, yes, sir.
How about those who are opposing the project?
Well, the applicant and the felon are the same, are the same.
Yeah, they, all the applicant's team has spoken.
How about those who are opposing the project?
So the opposing, the people opposing it, we should have phone calls.
Okay, so we go to the callers.
May I ask a question first, Ms.?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, Ms. Heron showed a, held up a picture from, I guess, the realtor that was selling the property. Can you, do we have that? You said it's in the book. Can you put that up on the screen so that we can see a proper image? Well, not like that. You said it's in, it's in our material?
He's muted, can't hear you.
It's in our materials, it should, are we able to put up an image?
Yeah, finding the page would be, I think, very hard.
Maybe somebody could try to find it and, no, I mean, I can't see it that way. If somebody could try to find it and project it onto the screen, that would be helpful. Otherwise, it's, it's not possible to, to see the image.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I can ask a question while they're looking for that, or trying to get that up?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Is Mr. Monroe still on the line?
Mr. Monroe, are you still on the line?
I'm still on the line, yes.
Yes, Mr. Monroe, I, you know, I admire your persistency and, and your, you know, your desire and your passion for this. your desire and your passion for this, this home. But let me, if I may ask you a question, and I'm not meaning to insult you or anything, but if the October 2011 photos of 2011, when you were in ESCRO, show an undisturbed natural drainage pattern in that area between your property and the property below the garage? And you purchased that property in 2012? And then in 2014, photos show the driveway consisting of filled soil between your property and the property below. Who did the grading? It wasn't done when you were in ESCRO. There are photos that show that.
I was planning to put a little garden, which I did. So I had a twelfth come in and bring some topsoil. And that was a pile of soil there. Okay, you can see, there was a little garden I put for my wife. I planted some flowers.
Okay, so you, so you did the grading on that particular area? And who, you said you spoke to in planning that said there were no problems?
That's exactly, yes.
Who was?
I spoke to, uh, what's his name, a fellow by the name of, uh, I believe, uh...
I think he, I think he initially spoke with Jeff Hamilton.
Jeff Hamilton, and also I spoke to Henry Sheets also because of all the trees, all the oak trees. And also I spoke to another fellow there, I believe his name was Roger Duane, okay? And he was also in planning. And I told him about the situation. And he said they showed no violation against the property. So I bought the property in 2012.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you very much.
But I have some pictures here, I can show you the driveway. Can I show them driveway on the picture?
I don't think we can.
Can you see it?
I have pictures, sir, I have pictures, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we go to the callers. Okay, phone calls, please.
Mayor, how many minutes would you like to give them?
Who's the person who's opposing this project? Maybe five minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think there are a number of people that may be opposing the project. There's no principal opponent. The appellant and the applicant are the same person. So unlike appeals where maybe the appellant is different than the applicant, you can just take the rest of the callers and order.
How many callers?
We have four callers.
Five minutes each.
Graham Wiffler, Graham? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Graham Wiffler? Darren Rohan, Darren, you're live, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, you're live, Darren.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Darren Rohan and I reside at 2500 East Chaby Chase Drive, right below the proposed development. The reason for opposing this development is a spalo. First of all, privacy. The house is sitting up on the hill with the family room and the living room facing our backyard and the bedrooms, which constitutes an invasion to our privacy. The garage is placed on the same level with the, our second floor bedrooms. And at night, the headlights will aim directly into our bedroom. Coming out from his garage, he will have to go in reverse about 35 feet and approximately 30 degrees slow in order to turn around, which will put our lives in danger. By the way, I personally witnessed the developer flipping halfway over with his truck after he created the illegal driveway. Also, the garage location is placed strategically in the middle of the illegal driveway, which will give him access to drive through his garage to the other side and later on, he could build a guest house or any other structure. By the way, the garage is placed only 4.6 feet away from the nearest oak tree. And as we know, in Chaby Chase, one oak tree came down to one of the new homes built. The house is not compatible with the surrounding home. It is ve- very much visible from all around and oversight. That is, this developer cannot be trusted. It has been more than six years since the developer, Mr. Monroe, illegally started developing the lot above my house. One weekend, he brought heavy machinery and created a new driveway by moving hundreds, if not thousands of cubic yards of dirt to the southwest side of the lot, even encroaching on my neighbor's property. Due to non-existing driveway before illegal driveway was created, the oak trees, the branches were very low with no room for the heavy machinery to access the area and to create the illegal driveway. First, he had to trim the oak trees on that side, which he did. He removed huge branches, some of them more than 10 inches in diameter. And the trimming was done only on the side of the newly created illegal driveway, not on the other side. Nobody inspected the way the oak trees were chopped off. I personally witnessed Mr. Monroe removing three of the existing survey, uh, survey marks for him to do his cover-up job. I even want to have of those, I recovered them after he throw it away and when he left the area. Another example is that he entered into a lease option to buy across the street from this lot, as he mentioned, he lived across the street, 2501 East Chaby Chase Drive, and he was caught doing illegal foundation and framing work without a permit. Since it was lease option to buy, he was forced to vacate the property and the lease option was terminated within six months. As soon as they, they cut up, the city, they found out and then he had to move out. As someone who has lived in Glendale for most of my life, I know how hard the city has fought to preserve the wooded hillside in Glendale with residents and prospective residents are alike, finding high value in areas such as Canyon, Chaby Chase Canyon. A home on a hill behind another that affects the safety and privacy of neighbors is not compatible with the area and is inconsistent with the expectation of those who have acquired neighboring homes and have lived there for years or decades. Accordingly, please uphold the decisions that have been rendered thus far and deny Mr. Monroe's appeal for the development of 910 Lair Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Victoria Valentine, Victoria, you're live. Victoria? Victoria, can you turn off your TV, Victoria? Victoria? Graham Wiffler? Graham?
Please, please, please lower your... Please go away from the TV unit or lower your TV volume. Lower your TV volume or go away from the TV unit. If you're watching TV and you want to connect, this is what we will, we will get. Lower the, lower the volume and go away from the TV unit.
Jocelyn Gindrox, Jocelyn, you're live.
Yes, hello, this is Jocelyn Gindro.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, this is Jocelyn Gindro.
We are, we are listening. Please go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and staff.
Good evening.
I'm Jocelyn Gindro, co-owner of 2480 East Chaby Chase Drive, adjacent to 910 Laird. I will speak about our concerns as well as brief excerpts from a five-year span of hearings from 2014 through 2019, tirelessly heard by the respected members of the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board. By this time, you would each have received a packet from us, which were hand-delivered on October 7th detailing our concerns with photos enclosed for your reference. On July 16, 2014 Planning Commission hearing, Babak Nasserpour, a neighbor and architect, challenged the applicant's claims on cubic yardage, size of retaining walls, et cetera. The applicant claimed 1,000 cubic yards will be cut, but Mr. Nasserpour's calculation was 2,400 cubic yards. He urged the project be denied due to inaccuracy and misrepresentation and to hold the applicant responsible for the drainage he caused to the hillside. On August 20, 2014, city planner Jeff Hamilton noted the engineering department concluded the grading estimate might be low by 1,000 cubic yards from what the applicant says. Planning Commission denied applicant's conditional use permit. On August 11, 2016 DRB hearing, when asked by Mr. Malikian, city engineer Dennis Zambaya replied, "There were no permits pulled for the roadway, driveway, the pad, nor the grading." Project was sent for redesign. On December 14, 2017, Mr. Malikian stated, "We are dealing with a property with violations. The property has conditions and problems that need to be fixed before and after." Project was sent for redesign. On April 12, 2018, Mr. Charchan noted three conditions: adding sizable oak trees and other native vegetation to restore the illegally graded areas, reduction of square footage amassed, and reworking of site plans to achieve conditions one and two. Project sent for redesign. On January 10, 2019, Mr. Malikian noted, "It is unfortunate that all of the professionals on board, not once have they suggested to do a complete analysis of a grading plan. The square footage has not significantly changed, the mass itself looks more massive, and there are numerous issues with the design." Project ultimately denied. Our concerns include compromised drainage, disruptive driveway, and compromised privacy. An enormous water runoff from the hillside basin, which includes two waterfalls, flow within a 180-degree span down Laird. The natural flood outlet that runs through both properties down Laird cannot be obstructed due to the voluminous flow from the hillside basin during heavy rains. On the owner's fill-and-cut plan, the start of his driveway shows a fill. This elevated grade will result in floodwater being diverted straight to our structure. The landform at and beyond the natural flood outlet cannot be altered. Also, the landscaping plan shows an area that blocks the natural flood outlet. The proposed driveway presents a risk to our lives and property that could arise from a misjudgment on steering since it is a steep downhill approach toward us. The balcony on the south elevation looks down to our backyard. If the proposed structure moves any closer to our property line, then our privacy is exponentially compromised and this is completely unacceptable. In conclusion, please uphold the DRB's decision for denial for reasons stated in its record of decisions and for reasons that directly impact us. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Do we have any caller?
Victoria Valentine, Victoria?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Victoria, we're listening.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Victoria Valentine. I'm here tonight to support my neighbors in denying the design of this project. This project has been in the works for many years with great resistance from the owner. My question to the city council is why is the applicant resisting DRB guidelines? The project should be consistent with neighborhood, fit into the community with the least environmental impact. Their reluctance to change is strange and confounding, strange and confounding. The DRB have the expertise for all ordinances and codes that every citizen of Glendale is asked to comply by. Ladies and gentlemen, you do care about the impact of development in our community and how it will affect the surroundings and everyone's quality of life. Please deny this project. Support the DRB denial and send it back to the DRB. But, so thank you, that's what I have prepared. But I, I'd like to mention something additional, my concern. 100 feet long sewer line is not mentioned. There is no existing facilities on, in, underneath Laird. Laird is the channel for the drain for, from the floods. Laird is the debris basin to provide flood protection to the surrounding community during the winter storm. A huge concrete underground layer channels create drainage into the ocean. Where is the house going to be connected? There is no underground power nor, the layer cannot be touched. It cannot be excavated. It will damage the channels that are running under Laird. This is, and then I'm so glad Mr. Broadman brought up the illegal movement of dirt that needs to be included in the grading amount. And I'm glad that the owner finally will be able to be honest and, and try and, and get help with that. He will get his house, but please be honest and no tricks. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Graham Wiffler, Graham? Graham Wiffler?
And thank you for taking my call for the Honorable Mayor and the City Council.
We are listening.
Uh, I'm talking about Laird. I was going to talk about something else first, which cuts my heart. And, and, I don't want to cry about it, but it's so warm. Everyone, we just know some about it, so they, they know about it. But anyway, so 910 Laird. I got it signed from the Chaby Chase Estates Association probably about many years ago about this project. And 910, all the neighbors were really alerted to it. It was a sticker, it was just a sticker. And so the first project I saw, the first time I came on it, was from design, uh, it was design, I think it was design review back then. That was before DRB took over. Uh, and there was an architect from the neighborhood that said, "This thing stinks." And he, and he told the, the, the people that it was completely erroneous and all the, all the stuff that, that, for grading and all that. And so I've, I've been there every single, been there every single, when the design reviewer came over it. And the last one was, the same architect says, "You better watch out because these are, these are erroneous numbers. They're, they're just erroneous." They, it was denied by the DRB as for many reasons, it's a stinker project, but they denied it for many reasons. But this one, this, this one architect that used to live in the neighborhood said, "Watch out, watch out." Because these numbers are, these numbers, as he figured them out, are wrong. And so, City Council, you guys, you can't go with bad numbers. You can't go with something that's, that's erroneous. And I, I watched... And I watched, and I was so pissed because I couldn't get on. For one reason or another, I couldn't get on. I watched the architect, the new architect, all these guys talking. He has daughter there and has all this stuff. And you're just hearing me. You're not seeing me. I'm a good guy. I've been there for every meeting for years. And it's all erroneous. And they're telling you something that doesn't actually... It's not actually real. And I'm just a guy. And I got assigned this job from the Chevy Chase Estate Association. I've watched it all my life. Or not all my life, but for the last five years. My father was an architect. And I kind of know there's something really wrong here. And the fact that the last architect that found the first time that was all erroneous, you guys gotta be very careful because there is something sneaky being done here. And that's all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Graham Whiffler. Thank you.
And thank you for Glendale City Council for hearing my little statement.
Thank you, Mr. Graham Whiffler. Thank you very much for calling. Okay.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Garcia.
It is normally part of our process to allow the appellant an opportunity to...
To answer.
To answer rebut any of the comments that were made during the hearing. I would give them a certain amount of time, three, five minutes, something.
Who wants to answer, Ms. Yerpremian or Ms. Heron?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can say a few things, then I'll turn to Elizabeth.
Five minutes only. Five minutes only.
Yes, very short. Mr. Mayor, members of Glendale City Council, you have heard the testimonies. You have very experienced staff members in the planning department and the public works. And I can assure you that most of the concerns raised by the neighbors will be addressed during plan check and building permit process. There is a process set to get any particular project approved by the city of Glendale. The staff reviewed this project extensively since 2013. DRB exhausted its review as well. There is nothing else that the DRB can do even if we turn this project back to DRB. I urge you and the city of Glendale council members to reverse the DRB denial decision and approve this project. I'm sure Elizabeth can say a few things as well.
Thank you very much. Are you done?
Yes.
Ms. Heron, do you have anything to add? Or you're okay with this?
I do, yes. Thank you. I just wanted to add a few facts regarding the grading issue of whether it was done before, after, if it was adjusted. It was scarified. It was not graded. Grading, there's no vertical cuts that were made. And my client put sandbags, took some of the weeds off of the driveway and put a garden there. And that was shown in some of the photographs. That's A. B, there has been... That area that is a drainage course for the hills behind has been carefully looked at. And we have not put any obstruction in that natural drainage course, nor would we, nor would the city allow us to, nor would public works approve that. So we won't be amending, touching the area that is of concern that is sort of a drainage course in a major rain event. Also, when we do build a house, we're going to do water retention from the roof. So we'll actually be able to handle any water and direct it in a meaningful way that would help improve an existing kind of difficult situation in a big rain event. So I just wanted to clarify these items. Again, they will be handled in plan check. And I want to ask you to please approve our project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess, anybody else from your side wants to say anything? From the applicant's side? Is there any person who wants...
I just would be happy to answer any questions too, of a technical nature.
All right. Is there any question from the architect and the property owner or their attorney, from my colleagues? Is there any question from those three people? No question. Okay. So now, I just want to start myself. I mean, I remember when in this city there was no rules, regulation as much. I don't know when this happened, that they say first 10,000 square feet you will build 30%. In some areas of Glendale, it's first 10,000 is 40% you can build. However, then the balance of it is just very little you can build. So 10%. What to me, and this was for preventing mansionization of Glendale. Okay. When you consider that, this property is capable of having 10,129 square feet of construction, a building there. So during the period of time became 2014, 4,600, and eventually 3,275 square feet. I mean, I'm a professional engineer. I have seen lots of houses, lots of construction. On a property which is 81,000 square feet of land and not to be able to build 3,275 square foot is beyond... I cannot imagine that you buy a property and then you can't have 3,275 square foot of house. This is so little for that property. I mean, in all fairness, they lowered the size of this house to nothing in relation to 81,000 square feet of property. So grading and those things, this is matter of engineering. We have staff here. They know what they have to do. They know how to review the drawings. So this is preliminary. Drawings will come back. They have to go through a lot in order to get the permission to build this building. So I don't see if... I forgot I was going to ask our attorney, but however, I will say it, even though I didn't ask him. I mean, in the past, we have pushed some other property owners that we didn't let them to build a reasonable house. And they didn't. Eventually, they went to court, and we have been forced to let them to build. I mean, to do whatever they want. So this is to me, this is a small building. For people, they made mistakes. It can be fixed. This is a building, and this is a lot. Every engineer knows you can fix it. You can do it. You can build it. Drainage, you can solve it. Grading, you can solve it. These are minor issues in engineering. So to not let them to build this house to me is, will be very strange. So this is me. Now I want to go to my colleagues. Who wants to go first? Anybody wants to comment on this?
I have some questions before I make my comments.
Mr. Najarian.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to the beginning in 2012. Who was the hearing officer that approved the CUP?
I believe it was a person named Brad Collin. I'll have to confirm.
Is Laird Drive a public street?
It is.
Who built it?
I believe the city.
Are there any other homes on Laird Drive?
There are two homes on Laird Drive, and they're both corner homes with access also from Chevy Chase.
But those are the homes at 2500 and 2480 Chevy Chase?
Correct, yes.
So there's no home that really is addressed on Laird Drive?
Correct.
Why did we build Laird Drive?
I...
Maybe you can't answer that, but I'm...
I just want to make a general clarification, Councilman Najarian, the mayor. The city typically doesn't build streets. The city would repair and repave streets. This more than likely was built by the developer who subdivided that area.
Okay. Would the city have required that?
Yes, as a condition of the development.
And then dedicated to the city upon completion.
Okay. There's been some discussion on water flow and the neighbors, several of the neighbors. I know the Swing family has discussed water drainage as well as the gendros. Is that an issue before us now? I haven't heard any technical evidence on water flow. Is that an issue before us?
What's before you tonight is the Design Review Board denial decision. Drainage is really not under the purview of design review. And as I mentioned in my presentation, drainage will be looked at during the plan check phase of the process with public works engineering.
Okay. There was the gentleman, Graham, I believe, said that in one of the hearings, the former architect came forward and said, "These are bad numbers." I think he's referring to making bad grading numbers, the cut and the fill. Is that something that we... Is that a design review issue? The balancing of grading and cutting and that stuff?
Correct. That's one of the things that design review can look at is the amount of grading, the amount of cut and fill, whether that's appropriate, whether there are other ways to do it that may be less impactful. So that is a component of their review.
Okay. Now, so I've been... I've been sitting here for 15 years, and I've done my fair share of these. And I can say never, in my experience, have I had and seen the statement that you had made about the DRB not respecting the intent and failed to consider how the conditions were met and that it satisfies the community development guidelines. That's our staff commenting on our Design Review Board saying they did a bad job. Not just a bad job, but they failed. What's... I mean, explain that to me. What's going on here? What do you... How did they fail? Who was on that Design Review Board? Let me ask you that. Were they design professionals or others?
Well, over the course of four meetings, over four years, I believe, there were members that went on and off the Design Review Board. I believe most of them are design professionals. They're engineers. There are some attorneys. Most are architects, designers.
I mean, but would you agree that that's a pretty strong statement? When you say they failed to consider how the conditions were met and satisfying the community development guidelines? I've never heard that before. Have you ever heard that before? Have you written that before in a presentation?
No, not typically. Typically, we concur with whatever the Design Review Board decision is. In this case, we did not.
All right. So that's... I mean, you're... I think it's more than just a difference of opinion here. This is the strongest statement against the Design Review Board process that I have ever seen. And I challenge anyone to come with something stronger. But let's get past that. I don't like the fact... Let's assume, and this is probably one for the city attorney. I don't like the fact that the applicant did illegal grading. Can I punish him by denying his project for that reason alone?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Najarian. I think on the issue of illegal grading, I think solely based on the fact that there was allegedly illegal grading would not be the basis to deny it. You would have to make a determination that the illegal grading or the amount of grading done, one, that it had happened, and two, that it's resulting in a landform in this planning of the site that is inconsistent with the design guidelines. I think that's the best way I could approach it legally. So yeah, the answer specifically, I'm not going to approve this because illegal grading occurred. I think that is probably... There's not enough evidence to support that because at the end of the day, to deny the project, you have to find that the project's inconsistent with the design guidelines. So the finding would have to be, because of the grading that occurred that did not appear to have a permit, this site as being planned will not comply with the design guidelines. I think that's the finding you have to make.
I mean, it's a very compelling argument to deny because they did illegal grading, assuming that I accept that. So, yeah, very... So those are my questions. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else have any comments? My colleagues? Ms. Devine? Ms. Devine?
Maybe I can clear up some of this. I don't know. Can you please, Roger, define predictability for me? Because predictability was part of the intent of predictability for Design Review Board.
Sure. One of the intents is predictability. And basically, it means the course of action is set. In this particular case, for instance, the board at some point had concerns about the driveway, and changes were made to the plans as a result of that. There weren't any other comments from the Design Review Board for one or two subsequent meetings. So the applicant staff believed that the grading issues were resolved at that point. That was the sort of predictable route. And then, at the end, at the final meeting, that concern came up again. So there was a divergence somewhere there. So that's an example.
Yeah, yeah. So in other words, they were given conditions. They went, they did comply, and then other conditions were put on top of that and changed this height. No, put it down, put it up, move the garage, do this, do that. Am I correct in that? That's what predictability kind of is focused on?
Correct, yeah. And then... And then, and then at the end, when the condition, uh, was, was replaced in, in the final findings of denial, um, that wasn't a predictable finding because, uh, two meetings ago, everybody had thought they had addressed it.
Right, they had agreed. Okay. So, um, I, I reviewed the staff report, of course, and, and you know, this has been a very controversial and arduous process for this family. Uh, as I said, I did a site visit and, uh, I, I boiled my decision down to three, three issues. First of all was the Design Review Process. Uh, the second is the compliance with the requirements proposed by the Design Review Board. And then third, the concerns of the neighbors. So, um, as far as the Design Review Process, um, you know what? In reviewing the history and staff's analysis of the case, I'm convinced that the process was not in accordance with the intent of the Design Review Ordinance. Specifically, it's clear that the intent of predictability was not met, as shown by the addition of new requirements at each of the DRB hearings after the appellant complied with the previous requirements. Second, the compliance with the requirements imposed by the Design Review Board. What, how did they react? How did the appellants react to that? Well, the staff report confirms that the appellant did in fact comply with the requirements imposed by the DRB members at each of the hearings. A review of most of the recent plans and staff's analysis of the size, mass, scale, and site plan, together with a site visit where I observed the story poles showing the approximate size and location of the building, convinced me that the floor area of the house was reduced and the location of the house and the garage was moved to a lower position on the site as required by the DRB. They took that house down from over 4,000 to 3,000, or to, I'm sorry, yeah, to 3,000, reduced it by, I think, 1,400 square feet. So that's how I feel about the Design Review Process. I thought that they did not meet the intent of predictability and I felt that the appellant was, um, in some cases, he went beyond what the DRB, um, asked them to do. Then we get to the concerns of the neighbors. And there were four of those and we all know what they were. First of all is the grading, the grading. My first question is, how is it verified that the grading amount was less than 1,500 cubic yards? Because there, there was a lot of dirt taken out of that, that area. How did, how was that determined? And are you sure of that?
Uh, I believe at, at one point, uh, the, the Public Works Department looked at that. Um, subsequent reviews, I, I don't, I don't know if that was confirmed or not. I think right now it's roughly, uh, it's roughly 1,400 cubic yards.
Okay. That's what you said. Privacy, the privacy issue. Uh, now, you've discussed the privacy concerns, um, expressed by the neighbors who fall within that purview. Um, what is, how is staff going to, or how are the architects and the, uh, appellant going to address the privacy issue? Aren't they going to, there, you mentioned distance, you mentioned topography. Aren't they putting a fence? That's what I was told. I, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that.
Um, staff doesn't believe that there are going to be significant issues as a result of, um, the distance from the proposed house to the adjacent properties and houses because of the intervening topography and then because of, of, um, of landscaping, of the existing oak trees and that sort of thing.
Canopy planting.
Correct, yeah.
No.
Um, the, the applicant is proposing a wall adjacent to, to the, the driveway, um, that has concerned the neighbors, particularly in relation to, um, and to, to, to drainage. Um, that really isn't a, that really won't address a private, any privacy concern, um, simply because it won't, it won't block vision just because of where the proposed house will be, and in relation to where the adjacent houses are.
Well, that, that, that kind of, um, confuses me because I was told there was going to be a fence there and now I'm being told there isn't. Um, the illegal driveway cuts regarding this concern of, uh, of, uh, all of the, the people involved, um, the appellant, uh, what, what was he required to do to address the illegal driveway cuts that's behind the garage? Well, I believe that it's been addressed. I, I think, um, I think page A, what is it? A1.4, uh, the latest landscaping plans on L1 and the grading plan on page A1 dot four submitted for this hearing show portions of the driveway cuts will be filled with compacted soil and the entire area will be landscaped with numerous plants, oak trees, five of them 15 gallon trees that will prevent soil erosion and vehicular access to the driveway. So I think that's been met. Now we get to the, the biggest concern, my biggest concern is the drainage issue. Uh, that is my greatest concern. Um, so the, these are, as I mentioned, I visited the site and, and I hope that my fellow council members are listening. I visited the site and had a conversation with the neighbor who called in, uh, the Gindros regarding the main concern about the drainage and how it impacts the property and the garage, especially the garage. Uh, I reviewed some photographs, which we're gonna take a look at later in a PowerPoint file that were submitted by a neighbor and would show the history of the driveway grading adjacent to, uh, the Gindros property. And in looking at the site and, and reviewing all of these and the drawings submitted by, uh, the, the Gindros and the site plan, I saw, number one, the existing drainage channel on the Gindros property collects water from two sources, the appellants' property and from the natural ravine and the waterfalls above their property. They don't own either one of those property and yet they are impacted by the water that comes from those two properties, um, by the majority of the stormwater. The water in the drainage channel on the Gindros property exits the channel at the property line between the Gindros property and the appellants' property and continues to flow over the appellants' driveway to Laird Street. The site plan for the property appears to show the drainage channel will be blocked. The plan shows that it will be blocked at the current exit location when the appellants' driveway is constructed, thereby causing the stormwater to be redirected back onto the Gindros property and which will result in flooding of that garage. Now, if we can see those slides, um, Mr. Jiminy, Jimian, please, that I, um, ask you to. Okay, first you see, uh, this is, and we're talking about the grading. This is the view of the site on October 2011. This was when it was in escrow. Then, the next slide is a close-up of the existing undisturbed natural drainage pattern in October. That's the other side, or no, that is the same side. Then the property was purchased in 2012 and then you see the next slide, which shows, the next slide, please? That shows the natural, the illegal driveway grading alters the natural drainage pattern. And the next slide shows the same. And the next slide shows the same, that the drainage flow is diverted onto the adjacent property, right here on that slide. So in looking at these photographs, number one, it appears that the driveway grading was done after the current owner purchased the property. It appears that the existing natural drainage pattern was altered when the portion of the new driveway was built adjacent to and perhaps on, uh, the Gindros property. And it also look, appears in this photo as if the existing natural drainage flow was moved totally onto the Gindros property. So I want to cite part of the, uh, Glendale Municipal Code and the Hillside Development Review Policy, which states in part, I'm finished with the photos. Site plans shall show preservation of prominent natural features minimizing alterations of terrain necessary for development. And I think minimize right there is the key. And just like the mayor said, everything can be fixed, this needs to be fixed. So I believe that due to the alteration of that existing natural drainage flow pattern, a prominent natural feature of the site was not preserved and the alteration of terrain necessary for development was not minimized. Therefore, until I see plans and methods for resolving the drainage problems, which may impact that neighbor, I will sustain, uh, the DRB's denial for the project.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Kusakian?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, you know, I want to thank actually, uh, Councilwoman Divine, Councilmember Divine for going before me because she raised, uh, some of the issues that I had, um, with this project that, um, first of all, I have to say that the design of the proposed house is, is, is a beautiful house. Um, you know, uh, my, I took my hat off to the architect, but in terms of how it gets to where it needs to get is, is the issue. Um, there are a number of issues. Obviously, this is dragged out and I feel, um, I feel very badly for the individuals and the family that, um, want to build this house, but, you know, you, there is this, uh, unsolved mystery of the grading that, um, you know, a council member divine putting on her Columbo hat, just, you know, those photos kind of revealed the timeline of. I mean, it seems to me strange that grading appeared to be done and the level of which would constitute a significant amount of dirt removal in, in a neighborhood where if you try and touch a window or a door and try to change it without a permit, you know, um, all hell will break loose. And how so much dirt was removed without anyone, um, from staff or from the city or from the, you know, it, it just apparently, it just disappeared is kind of, um, unbelievable to me. It's just not something that I, I can buy into. Obviously, um, things were done to, um, affect the site and, you know, were, at any other project anywhere else in the city, you know, we have strict guidelines about demolition of homes without permits, which we know have been done and the city has acted to try and protect those. I don't see how natural, uh, topography and resources are any different than that, um, in our hillsides. So, um, to me, I, I, I don't necessarily object to the home, uh, being built there, but in order for it to be built there, some things that were done incorrectly need to be corrected. And, um, you know, whether that is consistent with, um, the DRB's decision to deny or not, uh, putting that aside, for me, that's how I believe, uh, this project has to move forward. In regards to the privacy, I think that there are design elements and other aspects that can be, um, uh, done to, to mitigate and address those issues. Um, that is not as much of my concern, um, nor the construction of something on that parcel as the way, uh, it has come to this point. And so with that, until we can figure out and staff can figure out what happens with the drainage, with this, uh, figure out once and for all the, uh, illegal grading that was done, uh, I, I am not inclined to, um, I, I will sustain the Design Review's, um, decision at this time to deny.
Okay, Mr. Bratton?
Okay, well, um, I'm glad I'm coming after my colleagues, uh, because this is a tough one and, uh, I've not been doing this for 15 years as, uh, Councilmember Najarian, uh, says he has and, and it's my first, so, um, but I do, um, I, you know, I, I have concerns about the grading, but I think that's been covered. I just want to kind of come back to the DRB process, uh, because I, I don't see a problem with the process. I think the decisions didn't go in the applicant's favor, but I, I don't see a strong case for saying that, uh, they, they failed, uh, to, um, provide predictability and that they failed to uphold the, uh, the spirit of the design guidelines. One thing I want to, I want to ask though, so, um, the DRB met on April 12th, 2018 and I see here it says they voted three to one to return the project for redesign. They had a number of, of conditions, but one of them was they wanted to reduce the square footage or mass of the house to be more in keeping with the other properties. Um, so that was 2018 and then in 2019, uh, when they came back, um, they said, uh, the house is in the correct location, but, um, massing would be improved if it was a lower elevation. I actually a little bit unclear what that means, lower elevation, so somebody could clarify in a second, but also they say the size of the house is inappropriate for the neighborhood and should be reduced, uh, should be further reduced in square footage. I guess what I'm seeing is the DRB, uh, asked for something, um, there was some movement, uh, staff worked with the applicant. Staff felt like, that the issue had been addressed, but apparently it came back to the DRB and they didn't feel the change was sufficient. Um, and I guess, I think that's probably the way it's supposed to work. I mean, the, the applicant can feel that he conformed, uh, staff may believe that as well, but ultimately it's the DRB's, uh, prerogative to decide whether, um, the applicant in fact did meet the conditions that were put out. And it sounds to me from reading this that, that, that they were not convinced that the applicant met those conditions. So I'm looking at this and thinking, you know, yes, there might have been some little, you know, twists and turns with people not being on and then being on and some changes, but look, this project has had, what, three architects and, I don't know, maybe two or three architects? So it's changed a lot too. So I, I'm not, I'm not prepared to fault the DRB or, or say the process was, it was inappropriate. And on that basis, I also am not comfortable, um, overturning their decision and I would, I would vote to uphold it.
Mr. Najarian? Mr. Mayor? My, yeah, I mean, it's a shame that a project, um, is, is running into this sort of difficulty, um, on a city street in which it would be the only house built. Uh, and the issues that we're talking about are the issues of wat, at least for two of my colleagues who are not in favor of this, are the issues of grading and water flow. Can, my question to the city attorney, can this be returned for design, addressing the issues of water flow with a hydrologist to assure that there isn't this? And, and we've just, we haven't had any expert. This is an expert testimony we're hearing. This is just lay, lay people, you know, I walked up and I saw the way was sloping and it, my, the neighbor said it's gonna fill my garage. If we had, if we asked for a request for a hydrologist to opine as, or design a, uh, a culvert or a, a water flow plan that indicates there would be no harmful effects on the negative, on the adjoining, adjoining property, is that something that we can do as a council? Because no one, everyone likes the house. I mean, it looks like everyone says, I like the house, the size is okay, the privacy, eh, could be a little better, but that can be resolved by a fence. Can we send it back for redesign for a hydrology, uh, or engineering, um, not study, but design that would meet any safety or, uh, engineering requirements? Is that something we can do or this is only thumbs up and thumbs down on the project?
Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilman Najarian, so a couple of, of thoughts, a couple of options. So that the, sustaining the decision of the Design So, that the, sustaining the decision of the designer review board would, would, you know, deny the appeal, that decision would be a final decision, and that would then, you know, that would basically require the applicant to file a new application. So, there are a couple of options, obviously. One is that the council can condition, could condition approval of the project on a drainage plan that satisfies the Director of Public Works, that it's going to adequately ensure proper drainage now into public rights away, but the neighbor's property. That's something that, that wouldn't be out of the ordinary. The council could, could also continue, and I, if, if the council's inclined to sustain the decision of the designer review board, I was going to request that you continue it anyway so that we could prepare findings. You could push that out to, rather than two weeks, you could push it out to four weeks to see whether or not the applicant can put together some additional information on the drainage. Our, our thoughts here is just as we're, we're sort of spitballing this, is that you could remand it back to the DRB, but they, they have already, it's not a design issue at this point, as you note, Councilman Najarian, it is more of a engineering slash water, drainage issue. And so, one option is to leave the public hearing open, continue for a month, month to see if there's additional information that could be put forward to address that particular issue, if you're not comfortable approving it with a condition that a drainage plan adequately addresses this issue. So there's a couple ways of doing it. I think we're, you know, staff is probably a little hesitant to have us go back to the designer review board simply for a drainage issue. And then, I would note that with respect to maintaining the, I forgot the languages, hold on. With respect to having a plan that retains the prominent, the existing features, as I think has been noted by a couple of the council members, it would be difficult to have they, have an applicant put together a plan to maintain features that existed in the past, and we don't really have a previously, we don't have a plan that shows existing, the previous state of the property. We only have, we only have pictures. I mean, so that's, that's, those are some of the concerns we have, I think, with, and just so you know, so if you sustain the decision, then the project is, you know, has been denied. And then at that point, there are options available, but none of them would allow then the applicant to submit something new. So you'd either have to continue it to see if we can get some more information, or, again, my recommendation is to, if you have no other concerns with the project and the, the sole condition has to do with the drainage, is to impose, approve it with a condition that, that, as I noted.
I'm not sure anybody trusts anybody anymore on this particular project. I think the best we, I would suggest would be to push it out to a certain time and ask for those studies and engineering to be done, have it reviewed by the Director of Public Works, and then come back to us for further consideration.
Mayor...
Yes, Ms. Divine.
Yes, I, I would be, I would be okay with that, to give them a month to come up with it. I, I just want to see a plan. I want to make sure that they're going to put a plan in place that's going to allow that drainage to flow to the street and not into the garage. It's not going to impact the neighbors. You know, I just can't, with good conscience, okay a project that's going to impact negatively or hurt a neighbor. I think we all want, we, I think it is true, we all think the house, they downsized it. I, I don't think the neighbors really mind having a house there. I think they are just concerned about these particular items. And you've taken care of the landscaping and the road, the, you know, the, the grading down to Chevy Chase, you take it, you're going to landscape that, put the big trees, the privacy. Hopefully, we can get, make sure that there are a lot of trees so that there is no privacy issue. And then all we have to do is, is get this drainage issue solved, and then Mr. Monroe can go ahead with his project.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I just have to add, China, this was like a year or two years ago, they were taking rainwater, drainage, from southeast of China to north, I'm sorry, southwest of China to northeast of China, which is like, I don't know, 4,000 miles away. They were doing this drainage and other stuff they were solving. And here, this is drainage for a building. This is the part of engineering. I mean, they, they have to have engineers to look at this. Our staff will review it. I mean, drainage and rain drain gutters and others is part of the job of an engineer and part of the job of our staff to check any building which comes to us to look at. I mean, this are simple matters. They are not going to let this person to let the water run to the next house. That's why we have to be, not to make it so hard that people, they can't do anything. I'm saying from 10,000, they went to 4,600, they went to 3,700, 3,500, 3,400 during eight years. And I take it that even if they did this grading, probably they didn't know the rules and regulation of this city or this, by listening to the owner of the property, I felt that he's like me, came from another country, didn't know the rules and regulations. So maybe they made a mistake, but we can't punish somebody for lack of knowledge on something and now came forward to resolve it. So we have to give them the chance. The kid came here and was crying for having a house to continue. 18-years-old came forward, and probably she has to go to college or university to become an person, a useful person for this country, begging for her house. So to stop it for drainage, I mean, you guys speak to any engineer, and let's see if one engineer will say that the drainage is something cannot be solved. This is minor issue, in my opinion, and to stop the building just for drainage? I mean, we have a staff. How many people are working in our engineering department or design, not design review, the, which department it goes off?
Building and safety.
Building and safety and other departments. There are lots of engineers. We have professional engineers. Here, one is sitting in front of me, Mr. Golanyan. So anyway, in my opinion, the best will be that we condition to the drainage issue and let them to come back or bring the design to our staff, and with the emphasis, emphasis that on drainage to be resolved such that neighbor would not be, his or her building not be damaged or suffer any losses. Anyway, what we do now, Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, if, if the council is amenable, my suggestion would be to continue, leave the hearing open, continue this item to November 17 without further public notice, to see if we can get the information that, that the council members are requesting. And if not, then we can certainly continue it for a short time after that to, to make sure we get that information and...
No, but based on resolving the drainage issue?
Correct. That's the purpose, to continue it, to get the, get a drainage plan that's acceptable not only to the city engineer, but also to the council, that it adequately addresses the drainage issue.
All right, so we will postpone it to?
I need a motion to continue the item to November 17 without further public notice and leaving the public hearing open.
Ms. Divine?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we are second. Road call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
I'm going to say no. My objection was on really overturning the DRB's decision, which I think we should respect. So I'm going to say no on this. I think we should just deny the project.
I will, since you say that, DRB refused to hear certain facts before making decision. Okay, please continue.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian? Najarian?
Yes, but I'd like that information to be given to the homeowners as soon as possible so they can look at it and opine on it. Yes.
We would make sure it's publicly available.
Mayor Agajanian?
I don't know. Mr. Najarian, did you hear what Mr. Garcia said?
Yes, it'll be made available as soon as possible to the public.
Yes. Are we done with this? Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communications. I have nobody on the line there.
Oh, that's great. What's next?
Your business?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Is there any issue?
Any your business?
Okay, hold on, before we adjourn. By the way, today was a unique day, by the way. It's 10, 20, 20, 20, and it's not going to be repeated for your information. 10, 20, 20, 20. So anyway, with that, we have a motion, and I guess it's seconded?
Who's seconded?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Divine is seconded. With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 10, again, 10:42 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. We'll see you next week.
See you next week, everyone.